Don't just like.
I've seen it going that hard.
But.
It could come.
You do not understand.
Yeah.
There is one. Here.
Well, it's very. Spring even started.
Do you know her?
I'm not sorry about.
Yeah.
Send my apologies.
There.
Okay.
You know.
Your question is here. Do you know. Young ones and others from this song. The only thing is.
And present positive. So soon as we're situated, we'll start a very nice.
I mean, it does. That's basically. You want to be that way. We don't be not. My really, really. You go tell me. I mean, we're both. Are we that hell of a. That bad.
I agree.
I end up.
No, I zoom out. Let me get it on.
I.
And Jim got it in.
Maybe we should know that.
Oh, you're. Got the new person last. First time. You're not. I'm sure it's. I'm sure. Well, I'm. So maybe I changed my name. Most definitely.
We're. Yeah.
We're.
So what I call. Yes, so. I mean. That's. We're. We're.
I. She did.
We. Do you think. Instead of. You have this land. Exactly. Been down. Well, this. Completely. I mean.
Yeah.
You know. So she. Started. Right here. I would. Be interested. We. Very. You know. Well, maybe. You know. When I leave. Sit up here. Cause I was gonna be here under the first. Part of this. And then it'd be so it's really cool.
Oh, yeah. It's. Kind of. Very cool. Tracy, am I ready?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Um. In that case. It is six oh four. And I called six times meeting Tuesday, August first twenty twenty three door.
Give me everyone.
Well, please.
Councilor number.
It's really.
Councilor number. Here. Mayor Lobby.
Here.
Councilor number. Come here. Here. Councilor number. Lina Leo.
Here.
Councilor number. Friends. Present. And Mayor President Green. Here.
Thank you very much. This time I would ask for approval of the agenda. I would say that uh PB Swans is here tonight. They've asked if they can the street city council. I uh read put on the schedule after the presentation, the child care presentation. If that's okay. So eight six. Five eight six. And then discussion would be. Any other changes in the agenda? We will see. Then I would indicate motion, please.
And then moves to approve the agenda with said modifications.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extension? Thank you all. One thing. At this time, housekeeping matters. And anybody like to bring up before we get involved?
We got one thing uh concerning uh Prop one, two, three. Uh so um. Jackie has let me know that unfortunately currently the city or the county has signed up for Prop one, two, three. Uh this is state funding that we are potentially renting out on for affordable housing specifically. Um and the reason being is because we are a little bit late to the world here, so. I would ask and urge uh council members to direct that we have a complete focus on Prop one, two, three. Understanding is that it is six documents long. It is not that long. It is pretty short. Uh does not need that much legal review and. The amount of money that it could bring into our community is astronomical. And it is much worth the time saying, look, we need to get this as a priority. Uh from my understanding, the process will be that Jackie will go ahead and just opt in the county. And then the city, whenever we're ready, we'll have to opt in ourselves separately. But I feel like that's. A bit, you know, against what we would want to do. Having both up and in at the same time allows for a much more diverse amount of applications. Um especially given our wonky uh city lines. Uh. So again, I'd urge that we make this priority and we put this as our most important thing that we can do as a city for. Housing as it allows anyone in our community who can and. Is obviously organized enough to make affordable housing happen, happen. So please, this is urgent. The funding will run out. It's a limited amount of funding for this year. And the sooner we do it, the better. And the sooner the people can take advantage of that funding and get started on their own projects. Doesn't just have to be us.
I think that's fantastic. And we agree as a city council, and we even told Jackie that we that we would opt in. At that time, we already had the impression that she could opt in for us. And then we didn't have an action item, if there is an action item. And you know about it, right?
Yeah, so I I was gonna bring that up in my city minister's report, but I can just address it right now that. Uh the county wanted an IGA. And so they sent an IGA over. And uh we just got that back. I did not get it back in time from our city attorney to get it on this council agenda. But what I can find out from her is can we just. Since she's made her edits and changes and suggestions, go ahead and. Um. Maybe review it and see if they're substantive. If if the county doesn't have objection to them. We can go ahead and tell Jackie to opt in and then you can ratify that IGA. At your next council meeting, we did not get it back in time to get it on this meeting agenda.
Thank you.
So and and you know Linda has had a lot on her plate. We have, I made this a priority and a couple of other things priority, but she's had a lot in the plate for from us, so. Um so that's what we can do. It will be the IGA can be on the next council agenda. But if I need to let Jackie know before that, I can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh I want to mention, we have a L U R meeting this Thursday at six o'clock. It's going to be very brief. It only has to do with the ratification of the L U R budget. And so should be a. Could be a very short. Shortly. I hope that everybody will uh. Be a good job on the party.
Shorty and critical.
Yes. Okay. Anybody else from housekeeping matters?
I would I would ask that we can put eight or nine screws on uh the next agenda or two, just for discussion. And asking for uh what else for property management, some of this, to take that over the university administrator.
Okay, that could be part of the city ministry report. That's one of the papers. Okay. All right, thank you. At this time, we were entertaining public comments on items on the agenda. Everybody wants to speak. Step up to the podium, introduce yourself, and you have three minutes. Steve, you'll talk your. Was anybody else in the room also on the color? I have sort of not the agenda. Okay, thank you. All right. The news at the. All right, so. Your pleasure, ladies.
But. See. We have this. And to like the wish. Why? I don't know. Is it law or the liberty in Jackson?
Um. Now, I'm not worried. My understanding is um when you file something in court. You can't like. Weasel thing, although that happened all the time in history court. Um. There's a thing called the demure, which means that you're not answering something straightforwardly or you're. You're 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 not giving a truthful answer and I roughly understand it. Now. When I filed a court case in uh. Well, I'm not sure what here was. Although I'm on the. About the um. Uh. I think now our mayor was the litigating defendant, not as a mayor, but a personal. Then there was a. I had one priority that I was going to assess your office and I found out that the latter is listed as owning four properties in town. And then I said to myself, well, I know. By common things that Mr. Labay is associated with the uh group of. So I went back and I asked her who owned the group of it was now LLC on the group of. Well, then I followed my court papers uh. And I got an answer back from the uh uh. Attorney defending the action saying, well, it was a demure about the. Mr. Labay's ownership of partnership into the group of. Well, then later on, I went to the secretary of treasurer or state, I think it is in Colorado. And I typed in that the LLC. And Greg Labay was the uh. Um the agent who that LLC. So there were five big properties that were in the designated zone for every renewal that. Mr. Labay was associated with. Two of them were owned by, they were in the son's names. Whether they would actually pay for them or not, I don't know. But five properties were uh in there. So I think I went past a minute now, so I'm going, gonna hit the second minute here. You're into your third minute now. Just like it going from a third by third minute. All right, so I have twenty seconds here, so. Um. I think we should uh when we deal with these LLCs. We should actually know. Who the members are of the LLCs and what their associations are among themselves and each other. Um I'm not fine. Thank you. Thank you. Is anybody on Zoom who would like to speak to city council? But I was not the agenda. Okay, so you know. Thank you, move on. At this time, we have the approval for July eighteen, forty twenty three minutes. Do they have anything in those minutes that I feel we need to change? Here we know how we intend motion for.
Well, then then moves to approve the minutes. Which do. Consider the agenda, sorry.
All right.
Certainly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I have stated. Go ahead, though.
But I thought we don't have.
And you don't have to if you watched the video, but I would.
Yeah. But it's just.
I really missed you.
Okay.
Did I go aye? I saw the problems in minutes, but of course, I have no idea. Thank you. Um. At this time, uh we have a reappointment of Marshall Mark and Scott Stillman, historic preservation chair and commissioner, except. Uh Marshall is here, is Scott here?
I don't think so, no.
Um. And so this is the mayoral appointment. Uh if you can step at city council, is there. What's that? Our point of order. We both.
We.
The agenda, yeah. Oh, aye. Yeah. Um. Is there anybody in city council with any issue with Marshall Mark or Scott Stillman being reappointed to the historic preservation portion? Seeing no objections, then I hear why I appoint Marshall Mark and Scott Stillman uh to uh second terms. On the historic preservation portion. Thank you very much. It's a little, you gotta, you gotta knock it out of the park. And it is great work. But this time, we have consideration of a conditional use permit for uh Eagle Lock. Like changes from commercial office to residential duplex. Taken?
Yeah.
All right, good evening. So this is a public hearing. Do you want to give any public hearings? Oh, is it a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh in that case. At at this time, it is six sixteen. And we will open the public hearing on the change of use uh permit for Eagle Lock. Um. First, we're going to hear from staff. Um. We would hear from the uh. Is the applicant in the room?
Don't think, I think you planned to attend. Basically, I don't see.
We'll see if he's here. We can also have him present to us. Um then we'll have public comment. Uh. And then once public comments closed, then we'll be in deliberation, we can make a decision. Okay? Okay? So uh at this time, a public hearing did open at six sixteen. And I would ask for staff presentation.
All right, good evening. For the record, I'm Chief LaChance Planning Director for the City of Loveville. I'll be brief with this. Uh there's not any development proposed with this application. This is a chain of use. There's an exterior window modification of this scope of work, but that's it. So I'm gonna be fairly straight uh brief. Um this is a straightforward application. Um in your packet, there's a staff report, the same staff report that was presented to the planning zoning commission. Uh so I can certainly add certain questions regarding. Details of the application. Um but in terms of. Of this proposal, uh this is a proposed change of use. From a commercial office to a duplex, uh which is residential use. Under our zoning code, the um duplex is supposed to be long term residential on the upstairs and then short term residential. Uh on the downstairs. All short term rental licensing regulations come through uh title five of our code. So we'll just be looking at the the residential use component of this. Um so it's two family dwellings, which is a duplex. Is a conditionally allowed use in the commercial highway zone. Uh where this property is located at six ten Front Street. Um this is the only property that is uh not currently used for residential on the block. Uh so with this conversion, the whole block would be residential. Uh the exception is there's a, there's a, I think a garage, it's a adjacent property to the west. That I think uh look at tax accessory records and it's used for um for some commercial purpose. That's a mixed use property, these residences on that property. Also, on the street, on Front Street, there are seventeen properties. Eleven of those properties are residential, so uh sixty five percent of the uses on Front Street are residential. So I just wanted to provide that that context, because this is a commercial zone. The staff report that's in the packet says that the. Uh the intent statement for the commercial zone and also the future land use map designation. For this area, do not really contemplate uh residential use. It's intended as a a commercial gateway. Um so but we do have this existing uh residential context. Uh the other thing that I identified in the staff report is we do, of course, have a housing crisis that um was not as severe than the two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan. Um was was written and when the zoning district was delineated. And so uh that's certainly a consideration for um anytime we have a proposed residential use. Uh we want to consider that we are going into twenty twenty five, we'll be updating our comprehensive plan. Um and most likely that will be looking at where we can introduce more residential. Um there is a, the commercial zone is uh has definitely has light industrial and across the street, as most of you are aware, across the highway. Let's see, so uh planning zoning commission reviewed this application in public hearing. Uh last week, July twenty sixth. And the planning zoning commission's recommendation as a staff recommendation is for approval of this project with the conditions of approval. Um that are included in your packet. One of those conditions is that. The applicant just comply with all the title five short term rental licensing requirements. And uh and all building permit requirements for the for change of use. Um all details of of the application I mentioned are um addressed in the staff report in more detail. And we happy to take any questions.
They're gonna take the spine off the bar?
That's. Actually came up at uh. Planning Zoning Commission and I I think he said the property owner said he kind of likes it. But he he said he has had some people uh drop in uh for for appointments. Yeah.
I've got one question, Jake, about the short term rental. I mean, does I understand that Loveville's got a catalog short term rental? So is is there uh permit available for him or will be uh waitlist for some period of time?
And and I could answer that better than I could uh because she knows the latest and she she knows through the SDR license program.
So there are no permits available for the rest of the year? There's a list waiting once there are twenty two people right now.
How many?
Twenty two.
Thank you.
And then my sort of related question is, I just wanna, just for quick clarity, that if. Part of this duplex, the upstairs attic, for instance, is used as a long term rental and the. Bottom is used as a short term rental, that that would not be considered owner occupied. Correct?
That's my understanding.
Cause they're separate.
So it'd be one against the cap. Okay.
Yeah.
And although the property owner has submitted their application that they intend for the upstairs to be long term residential. We do not have any code requirements for them to do a restrictive covenant to restrict the occupancy, so. Um that we can't hold them to that, uh because it's not a code requirement. But it'd be great if they were, if they were to voluntarily do that.
And he could use both units as long term rental if he wasn't able to get a short term rental.
Yes.
Okay.
Um if we allow this uh change to residential, would the would the underlying commercial still apply? I mean, in other words, if you want to revert back to commercial, would that be used by right?
Yes.
Okay, that that was my assumption. I'll check.
Yeah, I did.
And that would be, would that that be true of any of those eleven residences? On Front Street? That if they want to revert to commercial for whatever reason, depending on the use, uh that would be used by right?
I believe so. I want to pull up the ordinance that we just passed on on July fifth and just double check and you know that that is the case. It would depend, depend on the use, but I believe the commercial office uh would be by right. Uh I guess it depends on the type of commercial use, but commercial office, I believe so, yeah.
Okay. And is is this um. Um.
Viable.
This condition we're putting in place, does it apply to the owner or to the land?
See, the the condition, all the conditions?
Well, just just let's say the 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 condition that it can be used for commercial use. Is that, is that, is that applied to the owner? No, it's would it would it sunset with the with the change of ownership?
No, uh it would be run with the land.
Okay.
It's not run with the land with the legal census or recorded document. Um but it would not, once this, once approval, your approval for the conditional use permit. Um happens, unless you have any conditions that you're applying, it would be changing with the ownership. Then then yes, it could, it would uh continue with the approval for the use would continue with the property.
So again, I would see that 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 is the same. Uh the applicability of all eleven residential units on Front Street. They all um. Are allowed residential. Under the land use code.
So um if if they're in the commercial zone yesterday, I feel for the same. Pro- process to switch to residential.
But what if they didn't?
Previously?
Yeah.
Going forward.
Yeah. I mean, there's some of those residential prior for a hundred years, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So previously, I mean, we've got thousands of situations like that probably in Loveville, so it's, that's a matter of. Uh depends on the date, you know, that if they were um, you know, your zoning code was adopted in nineteen seventy, so if they're residential prior to the adoption of zoning code in nineteen seventies and they're legal line conforming.
All right, yeah. Thank you. Just things, questions that popped.
Yeah.
Um and again, just for consistency, I was wondering about your. Down on West Second. That was approved, it was used as office space, and then when the new owners took possession of the. Um property. They started using it as short term rental, but. Ended up running afoul of our new short term rental code because. It wasn't considered a change of use. And therefore it did not meet technically ADU standards and therefore could not be used as a STR. Um. So just, I guess my question is along with yours in terms of sunsetting with the land or sunsetting with. The owners.
Don't know.
I could be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh yeah, so.
I guess my question is, how how is that necessarily? Different, so.
So in land use law, we refer to the the conditionally use permit as your entitlement. So once, once you are entitled to operate that property under that use, then. Uh unless the city council has, you know, some um reason that has some public purpose to put a condition. That says that that use would then, the authorization for that use would terminate with that, when that property changes hands, unless there's that that situation. Then that um that use will be authorized in perpetuity. But but I'm not sure that answered your question, I was just trying to verify.
It's just sort of a weird thing, like they they had actually acquired an SDR license, which was probably inappropriately on our part. Granted. I mean, in retrospect, when SDR regulations went into place. They didn't meet the criteria. And so administratively, we were telling them, you can't.
I think it turned out they didn't even have a kitchen, you know.
Watch.
Oh, maybe they're super.
They're.
Anyway. But in that case, like they had been granted use, but then we sort of rescinded that when our code changed and there was some. There were just some hard feelings about it.
It it's it's, yeah. Um I mean, I I guess trying to give you an answer here, you you can, it's difficult to rescind a um. An entitlement like a like a condition to use permit on once they have. Have some like vested interest in which way they spent money developing a property, paid architect fees, those sorts of things.
Yeah.
Then the laws will stop, will not really allow you to rescind that permit. But there can be other permit requirements, so the condition of use permit may not be the only requirement. For example, you may have to have a site plan approved, which is a it's a separate permit. You have to have a building permit approved, which is a separate.
You could tack that on later, is what you're saying? After they.
You can condition, you can say, um you know, that they must receive their SDR license and their building permit as a as the condition of approval. So then if 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 that's the condition of approval, so that if they don't receive that license, they don't receive that any other permits that are required. Then that, then you have a reason to revoke the S, the uh the CUP.
But if the license proceeds the CUP and later we say, hey, you actually need a CUP and oh, you don't now. You no longer qualify for the license that you've been previously granted. That. Flow is.
Um.
Like, I mean, like I said, I think they received the license in appropriately, but. That was ours. I don't mean to cloud this, I'm just, since you were asking about.
I I would, I would say in a case like that, uh. That it was issued inappropriately because we didn't have the information and and uh. Whether or not that owner realized that they did not qualify as a consenting candidate, therefore potential for a little license, I can't speak to that. But I think it was appropriate once it was discovered that they they were not an ADU. That it was not, you know, considered we had a full five. The standards in our code was, was, we'd say it has to have a suit up, uh that it had to be rescinded.
All right, thanks for that side discussion, sorry.
It's well, you asked a question earlier about uh in the new code and in that commercial zone, switching to office. And office is a by right use in the commercial zone. So there would not be a CUP or a public hearing required like this one for for that.
That's what I would assume, but I wouldn't.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Do we, do we happen to have the uh applicant? Present?
It is, it's either Tom or Bill Eaglelock, and I don't see them on.
Okay. Uh seeing no applicant, we'll move forward. At this time, we would open, this is a public hearing. Everybody in the public team, but speak about this particular issue. Um and if you would like to speak, please, in this case, I would like for you to sign up. And then uh uh you'll have three minutes to speak to the city council. Anybody on Zoom who wants to speak about this particular item? Okay, thank you, see you then. Uh then I would indicate a motion to close the public hearing portion, the public hearing portion of the public hearing.
Brand moves to approve the public hearing. Final seconds.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any comments? Any extensions? The public hearing portion is closed at six thirty. We are now in deliberation. Any thoughts? Seems reasonably straightforward. I would indicate a motion, please.
I brand moves to approve the Eagle Lock change of use. Conditional use permit. PL twenty twenty three dash U S zero seven. Located at six ten Front Street, along with the attached findings and conditions.
Hold on a second. Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll call this.
Councilor number Larison?
Councilmember Larson?
Yeah.
Mayor Lavi?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leal?
Yes.
Mayor Fortun Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn? Councilmember Grant?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hattler?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You can let the Engelbachs know.
Well, thank you.
You're right. Uh, this time, we have residential over sixteen series and point of residence, you authorize the purchase of real property, married one seventeen. West Kansas and run by contracted by itself, uh, commercial real estate. For municipal purposes, including but not limited to potential community center. Okay, uh, we. Is there any anybody who would like to jump in the framework?
Well, I can start with just a little bit of a, uh, I want to, you know, council received. Um, information in executive session, but I also wanted to present some basic information about this uh property. So what this is, is um one point one two acres located as uh in the resolution, one seventeen against tenth street. It is sixteen full city lots and two lots of a hundred feet, so that's just slightly less, um, so eighteen total lots. And um previously it had been used as the high school and also convention center. Uh, this property um is currently uh. The zoning is transitional retail residential. And uh, let's see. Uh, under your ordinance to such series in twenty twenty-three, um. The uh, the use of the property to community to center would only require an administrative permit, um, not a conditional use permit. The city has been working with the um. Uh, Colorado University of Colorado Denver Architectural and Planning Graduate Students. There are four students. Who have agreed to make this their summer project. Uh, and they have uh what this I included their scope of work, some of the information about what they do um as part of the packet. But essentially what their job is, is to come up with an idea of what the plan would could be for this building for the city. And um so they know, you know, the dimensions of the property, they know where it is, and. So what they do then as part of their scope of work is to engage community, meet with the community. Try and figure out what types of uses the community has ideas for us, and then of course. What logistically will fit in the building, knowing that they are architecture planning students, they can design, come up with potential designs. Um, in a perfect world, uh, we would have had that work done prior to having to decide on a purchase of this property. However, the real world sometimes doesn't give us every break that we would like. And um so I appreciate the council and the cities. Um, I think one of the things that we can be the most proud about of our city is that we are nimble. And sometimes the city um acts when needed, even though. Maybe we don't have a, you know, twenty-page plan and some renderings from uh our students. So the students, uh, the original idea was for them to have some renderings. And some ideas before the city was, you know, this project was unveiled. Uh, unfortunately, that did not happen, and the reason that did not happen and the reason this was shut short notice. Is that while this property had been for sale for a long time, the price had been reduced multiple times um recently. So um originally it was over a million dollars and the price had been reduced substantially over the last six months. I thought this might happen where someone else might decide it was worth their money to make an offer on the property. And uh, so how long ago was it? It was potentially, it was the Thursday before our Monday council meeting. I got a text message. From the property owner uh asking us if we were still interested because they had received another offer. The offer was um. An offer that the property owner was intending to accept. It was a very good offer. And so that is why we had to move so quickly, and I appreciate um. Uh, Councilmember Luna Leal and all the other folks who alerted the community to this and um had them come and. Tell us whether or not this was something that was important to them. Because uh I think it was very helpful to hear, we heard from the library, we heard from um. We heard from the school district. Uh, we heard from community members, we heard. From lots of folks who do work in this community with youth, that this is a space that would be very well. Uh, used and very is been needed for a long time. Um, I, we have gotten uh offers of assistance since the city. Has, you know, uh, given us, given me authorization to enter into a contract. Uh, we have a gentleman who's on our planning and zoning commission, who wants to help with the designing, wants to work with our architecture and planning students on design. And also the mayor has um run into Roxy Alden, so if you all remember, Roxy Alden's class came to us approximately a year ago. And the students presented about the need for this type of project. And they were on summer break, so we weren't able to get a hold of Roxy and her class in time to get them to come to the Monday meeting. Um, but. Uh, Mayor, and you can address this too, is that they're, she is very, very excited about this and really is like very excited to have her students engaged.
Yeah, I was in the coffee shop on Sunday, she kept bounding up, she was so excited. I mean. Yeah, probably true. Uh, and she's very excited and she would really like uh for her students to be involved.
Yep.
In in this, in in the ongoing call management of the place, but. Um, she's she's pretty typical.
Yeah, so I think that's absolutely essential in in some of the Flint and Murray conversations that. Um, Councilmember Luna Leal and I had with the school district is we realize that it's imperative. To have the students involved because they have then a sense of ownership. In the property and in the building and a sense of responsibility, and that will hopefully help us. Through peer pressure and through, you know, the the uh sort of camaraderie of students, help them feel that it is part of them instead of something that is just handed to them. So the vision and the plan for this is indoor community space. And there we have a team of architecture and planning students who are helping us work on that vision and design. Just so you all know, I had been in contact with our DOLA representative. Um, Department of Legislative Affairs, Randy Seed, who um is aware of this project and has let me know that the. August, um, obviously it is now, I can't believe that, the August timeframe for applying for grants was too soon for us. We wouldn't be ready, um, and so we would not get a good readiness for, but the openings in December and April. Uh, would be good times for the city to look at applying for grant money for this. And has let us know that the Energy Assistance Impact Fund, I think it's that's. Energy and Mineral Assistance Impact Fund would be the one that we would be targeting. Um, just so you all know, that is up to a million dollars. We can use the acquisition price of the property towards our match on that, so. We would um be able to use that acquisition price if we were applying for a million dollars, we could use the acquisition price towards our match on that. Uh, so that is the update. I will be working with the graduate students to accelerate their project. Um, and they are working on a number of projects this summer, but obviously they're very excited about this one. I let them know the good news. And so they will be helping us with a a vision and a plan for this building and ideally multiple designs that they've worked with the community to come up with. And um I do think personally it's very important for me to have the youth involved in this and the design, so. It, there's no set use for this as of yet, obviously there's tons of ideas out there, there's, I will tell you more ideas out there that will fit in this building. Um, but the main thing we all know is that indoor space is needed, and this will provide that, and. We can even look at phasing, so if we get money as we, we could look at phasing the opening of the building. Obviously, the sooner we can get it open, the better, uh, but that is the plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions tonight, so just so you know where we are procedurally. Um, city council authorized uh me in an executive session, um, you know, to negotiate a purchase sale contract, which is what you have before you. Um, and so that contract needs to be ratified um this evening, and we are on the track of. Uh, scheduling survey. Um, appraisal and our other deadlines. Uh, and Amy Tate is absolutely fabulous looking as our broker on this, and um we appreciate her donating her. Uh, a good chunk of her time to this other.
She's pretty excited about this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Did you say you were working on ordering the appraisal and survey?
Correct.
Now the buyer. Just paid for the appraisal. I'm just trying to dot my, cross my T's, I look at the contract, uh, but they were not, the the contract is not contingent on those, right? Do we have a timeframe in which those would be accomplished?
So um it is um contingent on the appraisal, it is not contingent on the survey. Uh, I believe that Amy was saying that both of those are about four weeks, uh, and you know, it it is. It is that. You know, where market where we, we we definitely will call, Amy will call in her. Her contacts and her chips to get those done on time, but it is contingent on the appraisal, it is not contingent on the survey.
Do you know what the ongoing cost? Do you have a dollar number for the insurance maintenance property man?
Um, so. I would say, so we've reached out to our insurance company to get an estimate on the insurance, and I don't know that we've received that back yet. I will tell you. That the estimated um insurance on uh eight oh nine Spruce was about thirteen hundred dollars. So that should give you a ballpark. I I I don't know, uh, a source that has gotten us a quote back on the insurance. Uh, I would say maintenance is one of those things that it depends on how much. Renovation it needs, and so right now, I mean, I would say. Costs are, the the heat is turned way down, the water, there's no usage, so as of right now, the costs are not. Significant, but as we get to renovations, we can look at how much it would cost to operate the building. And we will be looking at partners to help us with those costs.
And what about inspection?
So um we are not getting an inspection on the building and in part because that was something we needed to do to be competitive. With the other offer, and so I think we know that we're buying a building that needs substantial renovation, uh, the. Owner provided information about work that had been done. And repairs that had been done and things that needed to be done. So I think right now we know that there is some work that needs to be done uh to the boiler. There is a potential um spot on the roof that needs to be addressed, but the plumbing is operational. Uh, the um. Trying to think of the other things, the um. Uh, much of the asbestos was remediated, obviously, once we look at what we need to touch in the building, we will need to know whether or not. The other parts of the building need to have asbestos remediated, so.
Well, he supplied, uh, the, he said he had a report about the asbestos in the building and and therefore what had been done and what remained to be done. Do we have that report yet?
Yep.
Okay.
And I can provide that to council.
Okay, and I thought the roof was gonna be repaired under his insurance, like we talked about.
No, uh, I don't think that's the case. I think he had most of the roof repaired, but there is one spot over the, what they call the auditorium, that uh. Because of the snow pileup, uh, the snow had, and I I can confirm this, the snow had piled up to an extent where. If there was a. There was a part that was leaking into the auditorium.
And is currently leaking?
No, it's not currently leaking because there's no snow on the roof.
Oh, fair enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I I I guess I would qualify that with the amount of rain you got to know, right? Um, we could definitely go over there and take a look at it.
What, Lori, are we in a position to start to undertake some of the renovation even in the in advance of the students finishing their work and. Taking a comment and thinking about renovation, like preparing a toilet, for example, so that it's properly winterized and prepared.
Let's see, the boiler is um winterized right now. And so it it there, there's no immediate need on the weather, but yes, if we wanted to use the boiler to heat the building. Um, mine chain is new, you know, when you look at it, it's unfortunate that it's brand new, but it is cramped. Um, because it was. It, I can't remember what happened. It was either inappropriately winterized or someone actually turned it on when it shouldn't have been turned on and it was winterized, so. Um, yes, we could actually, we could, we could start doing those types of things. Yeah.
But that was part of the the DOLA grant request, was was one of those. Those who bears and and renovations.
Yeah, we can certainly include that, and I think we should, and you know, this is one of those things where I, you know, I'm gonna channel. Um, our fire chief in daily, and we're gonna need to chase the money. You know, I think this is one of those things where we, we have a lot of people that are super excited about it. You know, so DOLA is super excited about it, you know, obviously, the community is super excited about it. We're gonna need to be calling in a lot of those. Relationships to make sure that we have partners in this, and uh, I also can um. Find out what federal money we might be entitled to for this project.
And there are nonprofits that I've spoken to at least have been very committed to letting others may know when there's opportunities for this and. Uh, potential grant funding, for example, and we have C four that we know about the same bill of grant funding that we're, we've been looking at. Uh, but they're they're keeping their eye on it as well as was potentially wanting to. Be staffed there or have some type of presence there as. Even if it's least, you as a potential. Uh, way of kind of covering some of those baseline um costs. So the community and especially the organizations of the community are highly invested in this space and. To the point where they're willing to uh name whatever grants may be applicable to. Any other questions?
Yes, truthfully.
We do ask the design students to look at the feasibility of putting a pool. I'm sorry. Leah. Sixteen lots.
Yeah, and that's one of the things about this is, you know, people are saying, you know, that there, you know, is a building, it is not just the building, so if you look at the. The um, and I I can. Do the, if we wanted to do a work session, we do a bigger presentation, and in fact, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because what I'd like to do is have the students come up and do like a work session. Where they present some ideas and they can tell feasibility of things. Um, if you look at the assessors map, it's a parking lot, so we we purchased a parking lot. Um, and then a building, and then several lots adjacent to that, which have some dilapidated housing on it, which is my understanding, have not been in those homes, but they are non-salvable. Um.
It's just one, one hand.
Yeah, it looks like two, but it's actually attached, but yes, it's one, one home, but if you look at it, it's it's connected and it's not really apparent, but. You know, that's potential other recreation space or whatever space, so. We can have them get into that, thank you. Yeah, I mean, obviously, so obviously we hear loud and clear, there needs to be the pool in our community. The question is. Uh, the cost of that, and. You know, in renovating the building to include a pool probably is not feasible, the existing structure. But creating something that has, you know, we have land, creating, you know, structure adjacent to it, um. They can certainly, they, I'm sure they would be happy to design that.
Might as well dream big.
Well, I mean, actually, I agree with that. I I mean, what, there's no, there's no downside to them looking at what that possibility looks like. And having that as a a plan and. Who knows, you know, maybe we we have someone who decides that that's a fantastic idea and shows up with sacks of money. We do. I don't know, I'm still looking for that, but you know, I mean, I I I do think it 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 is a need, and if it's something that we can potentially provide someday, that would be fantastic.
And I just said, I'm inclined to.
Inclined what?
I'm inclined to vote no on this. Because I just feel like it's rush. Like I haven't heard anything about this, so whatever about me and you, I want to get you. And I got a call last Friday, can be a reading on Monday, couldn't do it. At work. Um, this is, you know, eight hundred twenty-five thousand. About forty-five several areas. Building. Gonna need a lot of work. That work isn't even gonna probably get it from where it's going from five. My god. I just don't find out level, you know, just, it's the money. They're rushed, I see. So that's what I'm. Would you think differently if we had a partner who was willing to pay for about half of the cost of the boat?
I think differently, I would say differently if, as Lori mentioned, if this work that the students were doing. Were would be done before the purchase.
I I would say this, we have the same level we bought the table, a long time ago. And it's a risk, it just wasn't, and and we knew as a city, there's no way we we could, were capable of maintaining. The table office, but we did buy it. And then after we owned it, we put in place partnerships that we needed to maintain it. And now they're restoring it and and it's going as well as as I could possibly have expected seven, almost eight years later. But it was a risk, and but it was a risk we felt like was important to take. Because it the the plans were done, they weren't gonna, you know, operate it anymore, they were gonna keep it open anymore. And it was too important to let it go. I feel it's a little bit of apples and oranges, I get it, but I feel in some ways the same way about this. Children have been asking, this community asking us over and over and over again, please, we need a place. To 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 hang out, to recreate, whatever it is. And uh we've never been able to do that, but the opportunity never arrives, arose either. And and so here's this opportunity, it's right in front of us. Are the plans complete or perfect, or do you know exactly what we're doing now? But do you know the very essence of what we want to do is is in our community's best interest? That's that's where I, where I am on the yes side of this, because I think it's, it is the opportunity. It's here in front of us now, we can make it work, and I'm confident in that.
Well, also like that, this isn't, I mean, though the process of buying this specific building is rushed, absolutely. The process of wanting a community center for a reason is not, but this is not a new idea, this has been an idea since I was in high school. Um and I imagine was my idea at the minute that the bowling alley and the movie theater were no longer a thing in Leadville. Our youth have not had access to any indoor recreational activities in this community. Since I was in high school and or middle school, when they removed the bowling alley. It's just the rough act, and we've seen that translate in their uh Healthy Kids Colorado survey data. With their drug usage and their other such usages. So if we're looking at this from a data approach and we're looking at this from a needs approach, then it's clear that the need is there. And it's clear that the data supports that need, and this isn't just some people saying, this is supported by Healthy Kids Colorado survey data. And it would be kind of odd to not take this opportunity of. Uh what I would consider a low cost, uh money cost for a high value for our community. Um we could not do anything with eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and let's add a million on top of that for repairs. Um or even two million, we could not do stuff with that two point eight million dollars to accommodate our youth. That we can with this type of building, and quite frankly, thinking that we can do that anywhere else, I think is a little bit foolish. And being a little blind to the reality of that is, you know, things are going up in cost right now. Everything's getting intensely expensive. I mean, even Spruce Street was intensely expensive for us. So the reality and situation is, I think this is a bargain, even with all the amounts of repairs that we will have to make. Even if it's at two point eight million cost for repairs, it's totally worth it. And the value that that brings for our youth is way more important than whatever monetary number we can throw at that. And our youth will appreciate it for generations to come, and I know I was in high school and this was going on. I would have appreciated to have something to do other than stay inside and be antisocial all day during the winter times. And leading to intensive depression. So I would really, really rethink just how much value is really coming out of this. From the perspective of someone who has not had the ability to access indoor recreation of any kind outside of drug usage, really. Um since they've grown up there.
Okay, I probably had something to. Um yeah, so first of all, like this is the same amount that we paid for Spruce Street, which was also a gamble. Also a potential money pit and currently houses some of our critical city staff that we simply would not have otherwise. This is a much larger building and a much uh. Potentially more widely applicable space. Um years ago, many, many years ago, you know, I was in this. We used this building as a convention center, and I was part of the groups that met there and used a lot of, especially the downstairs space. Um and then later was part of a group who looked into purchasing the building um for a different use. A little cheaper than, but the amount of work in our inspection that the building needed at that point was prohibitive. And particularly because our group was not, like, we would not be able to, say, access Dola funds, for example. Or other interested um uh 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 partners who have not yet been mentioned. Um the amount of work that needed to be done, much of that has already been completed. So does the roof need repair? Yes, but does it need replaced? No. Does the boiler need repair? Yes, but does it now need replacing as it did before? No. So there's a tremendous amount of improvement that's already been done in the building that is. It it at a much more manageable, in my opinion, scale. Um and that, you know, the city uniquely can parlay some of our partnerships into dispelling some of that cost. For the goal of providing something to the city that we just simply are not able to provide. We just don't have that. It is a quarter of our reserve, but our reserves are already double what the recommended reserve is. So I don't think it puts the city in a financial at risky position. Um, unless someone does it.
Yeah. Rebecca.
Uh kind of thinking about this building, I'm definitely persuaded that our community can use an indoor space, which we don't currently have. I also hate to be rushed, and it feels very disheated to me, but I also recognize that trying to find. A location and enough money to build something new would be prohibitive and would take so much time. Uh so that's, that's what I intend to go, yes, on this project.
Thank you. Percy.
Um I support the purchase of the convention center. I don't think we could build a building or have that amount of property for what we're paying for. I think there's a huge need for it. Um. And I think it'd be a real asset to the community, because it's not, we're not just talking children, we're talking seniors. We're talking um nonprofit groups that currently. They have other options, but may not be able to afford other options. So um I think those are great assets, and speaking of assets, it is an asset. It's something we can pull a mortgage on, it's not like we paid the street and that literally is a money pit. We would never get that money back. Um we already know there's a guy out there who wanted to buy it if we changed our minds. So I I totally support the purchase of that guy.
Can I address one, what councilor Lewis from Barat, which is a good one, is that uh the reason this was so needed to happen so quickly. Is that the opportunity and the need crossed at this exact same time. And then the opportunity was going to go away. And so that was the reason to have this so quickly, is that if we did not purchase this land and building. It was going to be purchased by someone else. The gentleman appeared at public comment and identified himself. And which was very unusual, um but explained that, yes, he was going to buy the building and he was intending to tear it down. And he was going to put up residential. And while he said he was going to put twelve to fourteen horrible units. If you look at that land, there are a lot more land there than twelve or fourteen units. So we can make an assumption as to what the other residential was going to be there. And so the opportunity to do this would have disappeared. Because I'm gonna tell you, if we did not have this opportunity with this building, this project was going to be shelved for indefinitely. Until there was another building that was available. And so it might be another ten years of Roxiel does his class coming and he just didn't have a building to use. So what I have wished in a perfect world to have all of the students were completed. I know that I wanted to have that done. I wanted to have another two months or three months, but we didn't have that time. And I just wanna say, I was literally, many people said the same thing, is the public comment at the meeting. Um that Monday was heartwarming and almost tear dropping to hear about some of the community members who came and talked about. Um you know, the the trouble that they had seen youth get into because of the lack of a space. I do not see it as just for youth, I see it for toddlers to seniors. Um the EDC came and spoke out in in favor of this, um in wanting to have childcare space, which is also a desperate need. So I'm gonna tell you, by the time we get a design for this building, there are gonna be too many uses for the actual space that we have. Um so I I just see it as, I don't, I think it's a strong need for youth, but I don't want anybody to assume that it's just for you. I think it is for everybody in the community.
You mentioned someone in your partner, you probably have, do you have someone like that? You have somebody who's asked us to ask for it. That's about as much like a thing right now, but that's, that's pretty hard. Actually, they they said ask us for five hundred thousand dollars, and said, we can do that. But of course, we don't know until, you know, that actually happens. Okay, I've been, I've been. Be careful about that, because that money is not in hands, you know. I feel good about it, but I, no. Okay, any final thoughts? Uh but I would entertain motion, please.
When you were.
No, sorry.
Public comment, it says on the agenda here, and action for matters on the agenda, public input, if you're already prior, it will be the date of the matter.
Well, can we take one second, because it looks like we crashed the uh. Oh, okay, we're still, we're still on, okay.
Are we waiting for this to come back up?
I think they'll be able to hear us through, so.
Well, we'll see.
They can see us as well.
Can we hear them?
Yes.
I'd like to hear from somebody. Okay.
This is Wendy, I I it, you're cutting out a little bit. I thought you were asking for comments, is that correct?
Well, we won't keep comments, I'm gonna let Mr. Prestash speak first, then you can be next, is that okay?
Apologies, I I couldn't hear what the next step was.
Thank you.
Okay, the second hand is on the nine once again. Okay, so after successfully challenging the uh decision not to not publicly comment. Um. I I'm one hundred percent against this purchase. The focus of this administration has been to strangle the police department and strangle our street department. Uh a massive carrot was given to um the developer, the rail yard. When approximately four hundred thousand dollars was committed to their infrastructure instead of city infrastructure per C dot the award. Um our street department could really use that money. The purpose for strangling the police's street department is to make this an untenable thing. For our community and default to having the county run those departments, one minute is up. And that way, uh eventually have one government here instead of two governments, city and county. So that the role of development and the real estate incomes can accelerate even further and faster. The rail yard was incredibly successful in accelerating gentrification. And accelerating the hardship on lower to middle income property owners with the increase in taxes. Uh we have a local government here. And I don't limit this to the city government that uh has many ethical violations. Uh among its members. Um one of the ethical violations that we seem to maintain. Is of all assertion of conforming to the comprehensive plan without asserting in the documentation on how. Uh the confirmation plans con uh conform to. Further, I'd like to see a moratorium on this until we have orders to compel or discharge uh. LLCs or corporations by electing who their members are. For all we know, this um purchase is gonna benefit Mr. Labbe personally. Uh his sons were, one of the deed is owning the property. Um Urban Rebuild came in, they sold the property two months before Urban Rebuild came in, to some developer. And now either that developer or somebody else in the chain is gonna be making six hundred thousand dollars on the property. This seems bizarre to me. Um and we should uh update uh whatever members change on these uh. LLCs or corporations and have stiff punitive charges if they don't comply. Thank you kindly. Wendy, you said that you wanted to make public comment?
Oh, I just had a question, as a homeowner of a hundred and thirty-five year old house. Um I am curious whether you're gonna have your own inspection. I totally get having to um compromise on some things when you're purchasing a house in a hurry. I had to do that with my house as well, but if you don't have a full inspection, how do you understand how to move forward? And what, and 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 all of that, it seems like it would be a good thing for the city to have their own inspection.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment at this time? Okay. Thank you. Any mo- any more final comments?
Uh I would like to say one thing. Um this property is not in the Urban Renewal Authority boundaries.
Actually, it is in the Urban Renewal Authority boundary, it's not in the historic overlay district. Okay, all right, I was, I was breaking. Okay. I knew it wasn't in the historic district. Yeah.
Oh.
It's uh between.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, fair. So I I will make a statement uh based on Mr. Prestash. He he consistently gives us very, very misleading um information. Back of the time, I try to ignore it. But I do wanna say, my son did at one time owns this building, and he bought it because he wanted to build a distribution brewery. But his business failed, and as part of bankruptcy, he sold the building. So and then this person, Trent Reynolds, who owns it now, or whoever owns it, uh bought it from my son Chris. But I I do want that that clarification, and I've never had any zero interest in any of my son's properties. Any of my son's businesses, incidentally, his name is also Greg Lobb, so we just have a different, different middle initial. I know it, I'm sorry. Well, actually, I've gotten calls from, you know, it doesn't matter. Nonetheless, uh that's that's a clarification on my part. In which case, I would entertain a motion, please.
Luna Land moves to approve resolution number sixteen, series of twenty twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the purchase of real property known as one seventeen West Tenth Street. And ratifying a contract to buy and sell commercial real estate for municipal pur- uh purposes. Including but not limited to potential community center.
Three seconds.
Is there any other discussion?
Uh just wanted to give a very, very big thanks to Lori Simonton for getting this on roll. We talked about this shortly after the youth presentation as one of goals that I had personally in mind in our one-on-ones. And it's very heartwarming to see this probably come through, it felt like a pipe dream, but here we are, purchasing. You know, entering into a contract to purchase a building, so thank you, Lori, for making this happen and for all the work that you did to get us to this point. It's a lot of unseen work, so um I saw some of it, but I imagine you did more that I didn't see. And I'm eternally grateful for that amount of work that you put into this.
There is a great, great. There is a great, great deal going on that we didn't see, sorry. Any other discussion? We'll call, please.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Heck yes.
Yes, definitely.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Yes.
Good conversations. Thank you all very much. I think it's a bold move. I say that every time I make a bold move, so, uh, uh, you know what? It's worked out for us, and, uh, I feel, I feel great about where we've gone with the Cape Rock House. And I hope seven years from now, I feel equally great about what we did here for our community. Thank you. At this time, we have, uh, certification of Deputy City Clerk Hannah Shear as designated election official. Not sure what form that certification takes. Should I just give her my blessing?
Yes. Yes. I, I think you can just say, I hereby designate Deputy City Clerk Hannah Shear as our designated election official.
I hereby certify, uh, Deputy City Clerk Hannah Shear as our designated election official. Thank you, Hannah. Hannah's already been working very hard on this, so she's, she has her ducks in a row. Uh, the packets have to be picked up a week from today.
Now they're ready to be picked up.
And they have. That's, so that's the eighth, and they have until the twenty to turn them back in, so that the signatures on those petitions can be certified.
Do you have any potential mayoral candidates?
Yeah, I talked to someone today that said they intended to run. But until that person announces, you know, we can't talk about it, but, yeah.
And it's my seat, it's up, who? And you're, uh, the three of us, okay.
From one inch where the mayor, city treasurer, the city treasurer and the city clerk.
And I think you and I are term limited, so we're. We'll be rerunning.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we have the city administrators' report.
Great, thank you. Just a couple of things to, um, update. Uh, I had on my list to talk about Prop one, two, three, so, um, thank you, Deputy Councilmember Real for bringing that up. Uh, we have the I D A booked at our Leo Council, so we'll be, uh, working on that to let Jackie know about that. We do not wanna pass up on that opportunity. Um, our city attorney's office also asked, as the mayor indicated, that it is very important for the city council to attend the upcoming board meeting. As it has been publicly noticed, and, um, that is something that we, uh, need to do. It's in order to have the, uh, budget meeting, and if we don't have a quorum, then we have to pay to nurse it in the paper again. So just encouraging council to show up for that. Um, a couple other updates, um, I think I mentioned to you a while back about the bag fee that is collected, so. I have had some communication with C four. Um, they, of course, are very interested in being the recipient of the portion of the bag fee that can be remitted to the municipality. Uh, as I mentioned in the last city administrator, prior city administrator's report, we would need to do that by ordinance. And so I've asked if C four can help us with that. Um, we have some other samples from other cities that have passed a similar ordinance, but we would just need to pass an ordinance, um. Collecting that fee and having it not be retained by the merchants. Right now, it's retained by the merchants, and a portion of it can be remitted to the city for basically, I'm gonna use a term that they don't, like recycling purposes. Um, we can't just put it in the general fund, and so we're looking at whether or not it, C four would qualify to be the partner. We could give that money too. Obviously, they are ecstatic about that. So that's where that is. We're looking at whether or not C four could be the recipient of those funds, which would be fantastic. Um, we are working, um, and with Lexible, as I mentioned, our employee handbook. Um, Aaron Lucent and I will now be meeting probably, um, once a week for a couple hours to, uh, go over potential changes to our employee handbook. This is a long time coming and will be fantastic when it's done. Or at the point where Lexible now has our current handbook, they will look at it and make their recommended changes to us. What is required by state and federal law, and then we sit and go over each section with them. Um, once a week to figure out what else we would like to add to the handbook. So we will be seeing that. It does need to be ratified by the city council. It is, I think, oh my gosh, nineteen pages right now. It will be a lot longer than that when we're all done. Because our handbook is very outdated. Um, so, but if that will be coming to, it probably will not be coming to for a while. I think Lexible said. They, they asked our deadline, I said, what, you know, if we can complete it in twenty twenty-three, that would be fantastic. So hopefully you will see that. And, um, so just the update on eight oh nine S Bruce. I would love to have a property management company. Uh, as you know, we put two RFPs out for a property management company. We have not received any responses. I asked Michelle to full call anyone who does property management, really within about a hundred miles of here, and we haven't gotten anyone to commit. I will be trying to talk to one person into being our property management company. But right now, it's undifficult because I am the property management company. So when people are interested in the property or have questions, if Jackie refers me to someone. We have had a couple people, one person was not qualified because they were not employed at all in the county. Not at all. The person was unemployed and had no feasible way of paying rent, and we're, we're, that is not what we intended. Um, they needed a shelter as opposed to, um, employee housing. We've had a couple other people approach us right now, have an application in from someone else. Um, so hopefully that pans out, and, um, I would love to have a property management company do this so that. You know, right now, if someone wants to look at it, we basically have Lori Ty run over with a set of keys. Um, and so we, we would be well positioned to have a property management company do this instead of us. But that's where we are right now. And, uh, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm grateful that we have it. Uh, I get lots of questions about overnight housing. I got a call yesterday about just some of the immediate overnight housing, and that's not also the intended purpose. But if people are aware of it and, and have been asking, we want to try and keep it for employee housing and respectful for the people who are there right now. It is not short-term rental, and it is not overnight house, so. That's where we are with that right now, and I would put it on the list for discussion. Uh, we, we have it, I think, on the next agenda. We ended up moving it just a little bit for kind management, you know, the discussion, but. We will have it on the next agenda.
I think that I ju- no, I think, I know that I just asked that because I want, I don't want it to fall off the radar. I think it's important enough. Uh, that we are, uh, utilizing that space the way that we intended. And I think it's important enough that it not fall to, uh, the city administrator. So that's why I wanted to bring that back up to ask us to revisit the idea of the property management. I don't believe that I spoke that clearly when I mentioned that first, but that really was my intention.
I guess what I would just ask you is, I don't know that we need a discussion matter, other than I just need someone. And so if anyone knows anyone who can actually physically do it, the RFP is out there. So we ju- wait, I mean, we don't, there's no steps the city needs to take in order to get a property management company. We just need somebody to show up and say, you will do it, and that would be good enough. I just. You know, I think a lot of the property management companies in town, we have either full called them. Or approved them, and, you know, they have plenty of business already, they. So, yeah, if you, anyone else we favor to call in, please?
It's a required real estate license to do property management.
I don't believe it does.
You actually do need a.
For, just for us, so for us, it would be leasing. For property leasing, because we handle the maintenance and everything. Okay, well then, actually, that's good, I looked into that and know, and figured that out. Yeah, good to know. Okay, and that's it? Any other, unless there are any other questions or?
Do you have any sense for how much money is generated by the bank? Or is it too early?
Um, well, so, not in total. Uh, but if, so, un- unfortunately, the bigger, some of the, like, Safeways in the county limits. So that would, um, our biggest, our biggest, I think, potential bag generating would be Big R. Uh, and then anyone else, I, I don't know, you know, maybe the convenience stores.
Convenience stores should be. Then it doesn't apply to them. So it's really just bigger businesses, and I don't know how many of those exist inside the city.
Right, and then we need a system. So once we would look at the ordinance, we would need to, uh, obviously know, figure out which businesses would fall under a potential ordinance. And notify them and then be able to have them remit that.
I would say, I've had this conversation, Lori, I'm not sure it's worth it. You know, and, but I, I'd like to, I'd like to know, what are we talking about? And we talk about enough financial generation to make it worth our while? Because administratively, we thought accommodation is taxed, it's gonna be pretty straightforward, and it's not. And the bag fee, then who enforces it? You know, those sorts of things. I think those are, those are conversations we need to have.
Do the, does the business like Big R, do they remit? What they collect to the state, and the state purses it out, or what, who, where does?
They don't remit any of it right now, unless, so, right now, uh, the way the legislation was written was. I told you there was a drafting error. So it was supposed to be, as soon as the bag fee went into place, it was supposed to be required to be remitted. But they put the bag fee in place, affected twenty twenty-three, and then there was a drafting error. You didn't have to remit the money until twenty twenty, start remitting the money until twenty twenty-four. And so this legislative session, they, they corrected that drafting error. So as of the effective date of the governor signing that legislation, we could be correcting that, having it be required to be admitted to us. So the county, anything that's in the county, the county would have to be their own ordinance or, or. Whatever, you know, laws that to require that to be admitted. So right now, any merchant who likes that fee. Gets to keep it themselves. They don't have to send it to anyone. So, we, I, I would honestly say, if we didn't have bigger stores in Leno, I don't think it would be worth it. But we do have Big R, and I suspect that they would generate some money. And part of the creating a partnership with C four is if C four can do some of the light work to help us with the ordinance. And help us figure out if it qualifies. Um, they were very excited about that. I said, I don't come to the banquet to do all this. I sent them the law, I sent them the information. I said, please let us know if you would qualify for this. And here's some cities that have passed the ordinance, can you help us draft a moment? So if they can do some of the lifting, and they can end up with. Uh-huh, seven dollars.
And fifty-six cents.
Looking forward, like, if we had something in place, I mean, our economic development hopefully is gonna start paying attention to the industrial part. And then who knows what's gonna go in in the commercial section of the rail yards. That's city too. I mean, I know Natural Grocers at one point had been talking to John.
Yeah, so I don't know that it's. Uh, it, it may not be, but I think having a partner help us with the right work is definitely good. And if they're, if they, we do it, and they find out that it's not a whole lot of money, and it's a lot of good for us. You know, we can decide what to do after that. We're, I, I just throw a little bit of money on the table with the girls before. You have a little bit of money to them is a lot of money.
And they are great at chasing money. Emily is the master.
And it is a non-sunsetting, non-reapplying funding that they would be receiving that presumably will grow with time, so it's. Immense for any nonprofit, especially one like C four that isn't nearly at the size of like, let's say, Full Circle or LC Bag.
Yeah, that's a good point. It would be a steady infrastructure for that, regardless of how much it is.
Yeah, alright, we'll see to what the numbers are. Be interesting to see.
Many agree.
I assume that they make eight dollars in a day.
Okay, um, thank you very much. Any other, any final questions for the city administrator? Okay, it's just time we have a presentation regarding childcare.
And so, I'm like, an hour and a half past when I was like, ready to present, so my interview, we're still here. Um, my name is Brett Carlson. I facilitate the Childcare Coalition for LC Bag. I'm here along with my partner, Brian Stacy Penny, who is the executive director of the Rocky, or I'm sorry, the Rocky Mountain. Early Childhood Council. There's a lot of early childhood issues. Um, we're here tonight to present a proposal for support for funds. Um, with a early childcare fund that we just set up under LC B. So, uh, three years ago, um, just a little bit of history and background. Um, a childcare coalition was created under LC Bag. In response to the childcare crisis that we're currently experiencing in Lake County. Um, and just the severe health, um, effects that it's having on families here. Um, so currently, uh, we have a little over four hundred and twenty young humans under the age of five. And we have a hundred and fifteen licensed care slots available for those young humans. Those care slots are for twelve, um, twelve months and walking. So there are no childcare slots for anyone under the age of one in the town. So that's kind of just a very quick snippet of what the availability is. Um, in part, in terms of care. Um, the, uh, coalition itself is made up of myself, Stacy. Other representatives from local licensed centers and just passionate and engaged community members. And over the past three years, we've had a lot of different programs and projects. Um, focused on mainly staff retention and recruitment. Um, I'm currently running a mentor program in which we're encouraging any individual, not just students, but anyone individual. Interested in becoming a caterer, um, and doing a paid internship and helping them with features in early childcare. Um, and that's been greatly successful. Um, and then we're also looking at connecting with at-home providers, as we know, seeing as that huge gap. Um, a majority of our young ones are being taken care of by people at home. Family members, friends, neighbors, whoever has the capacity to go after our children. And first and why I'm here is a sustainable funding source. Um, as you look at it, childcare is probably the worst private entity that you could ever imagine, right? You wanna make it financially available to families, but you also wanna make sure the people that are watching after are the most important people in our lives. Our children are educated, and they know what they're doing, and they're doing it safely. Um, and those two things don't match, right? You don't, can't require a high education of someone and not repay them. But also you wanna, again, keep those costs low for families. It's just like the worst private model of all time. Um, so, sustainable funding has been a huge discussion all around the country over the past couple of years. Um, within our region, we even see, like, local tax funding dollars, um. Going towards early childcare and education, specifically in Eagle County. Um, but there's even places like Park City that are donating millions of dollars toward the sustainable system. Because there is, again, a major gap between being able to offer care to families and provide that quality. Um, so, again, we have set up the Lake County Early Education and Care Fund under LCCF. And our mission is really to make sure that we're supporting and promoting, promoting licensed, high-quality care. Programs for our families and the future of our community. Um, again, I think that the biggest thing here that I wanna emphasize is quality. And the reason why that is, is because of the importance of development within this timeframe of a person's life. Ninety percent of the connectivity within our brain development is happening during the first five years of life. It is the most important and influential time in any one person's life. Um, and childcare and early education has been the, really the foundation for the future health of any community for a number of different reasons. Not only does quality care promote future academic success of individuals. But also just holistic health of the individuals that go through it, the social emotional status and physical health. Um, as well as, um, in, excuse me, as well as lower participation in social services in the future. And terminal justice is known for individuals who are in high-quality care. The second piece of high-quality care is the high economic return invest of investment. Um, where the most recent studies are showing is upwards of thirteen percent. So what that means is for every dollar that's invested in quality care, six dollars of return. Um, everywhere from attracting new businesses to making sure that highly qualified individuals are able to stay in their communities. Families are able to stay. An entire family can work, an entire family can still purchase their groceries. And so make sure that their kids are well taken care of, um, and that's huge. Again, I keep speaking about quality and the importance here, I will say, is unregulated childcare that's happening in our community. Again, I keep speaking about quality and the importance here, I will say, is unregulated childcare that's happening in our community has the exact opposite effect. What does that mean? That means children who are not getting the quality of the care that they deserve, that they need, are seeing higher rates in um, being negative outcomes such as involvement from foster systems and such. Um, really, this is all about being able to build up a community from the base level and the, and the need that we have as, as holistically approaching, and that all comes from housing and childcare. Um, so again, the man, the fund is set up, um, now it comes to management of the funds itself. Uh, our intention is for there to be a committee of qualified early childhood professionals that will manage the funds. Um, we're looking to recruit another member so that we're ideally having three people to, on that committee. Um, and then once that committee is established, we'll be creating eligibility requirements um, that will be very clearly outlined for any licensed provider or provider who is looking to be licensed to apply. So again, the committee will manage the funds, create guidelines as to what allowable costs are, as well as like sustainability plans. And then anyone who is already a licensed provider or H P eleven provider can apply for those funds. Um, I think it's really important to emphasize that these funds are not meant to supplant the funds that already exist, but to supplement what is the huge deficit that we are experiencing. Um, and the funds that we are gonna target really are efforts towards is again, that staff recruitment and retention. As we know, that is our biggest crisis right now, is being able to pay our teachers and to make sure that they know that they are very much appreciated and, and recognized as being critical providers in our community. Um, and recruiting more, um, operational pop and then tuition assistance for families. Um, as a piece of this, we're looking into documentation and reporting and making sure that the recipients of any of the funds are responsible for reporting on any funds that they are already receiving, again, so that we're not duplicating that. Um, as well as doing mid and end of year reporting so that we can see where the funds are going and if they're being successful. Um, the amount that we are asking to be requested as a, um, donation from the city is fifty thousand dollars for the first year. Um, and through that reporting and documentation over the first year, we're hoping to see successful numbers. And we will closely tie that to quality improvement and increased access for families. Um, in the future, if we are able to prove success, we would love to have a renewal option, um, for multiple years. Um, but really, we're looking again at the investment and not only just our community from a social space perspective, but again, that economic impact was huge. A dollar for a six-dollar return is massive. Um, and just the benefit in the holistic nature of what is provided in quality care and the benefit that it returns to your community is expansive. Um, some of our family working earlier, you saw, um, there are a lot of families who are in support. Um, in your packets, you have the whole proposal. What I have just shared is kind of your, a brief outline. Um, and there are some testimonies from families, but I think that it's no surprise to anyone here, um, or anyone in this community that this is a crisis and something that we need to address, just can't simply do on our own. Um, and the small, the small amount of licensed providers that we have don't have the capacity to find the funding in a sustainable way. And so that's what we're here to advocate for, um.
Just, um, hi Stacy Petty. I'm the Director of the Rocky Mountain Early Childhood Council. We are the regional council that covers Lake, Eagle, Pitt, and Garfield County. We are also, uh, the organization that's implementing universal preschool as well in Lake, Pitt, and Garfield and Western Eagle Counties. Uh, and so we're working alongside with licensed providers every single day, trying to help them piece together different funding streams to help keep their doors open. We work with so many directors who, instead of spending their time running their business, supporting their teachers, or chasing down every payment, every penny everywhere just to keep the lights on at times. So, uh, we really think it's incredibly imperative that we're able to continue to advocate and raise additional funds to help, um, make that day-to-day operational piece, um, easier for them and tie it to several outcomes and improve that higher quality. Happy to entertain.
Thank you, Scotty. Thank you, Brooke. Do we have any questions?
Yes, one. Uh, now is this asked for this fiscal year or for the upcoming twenty twenty-four year? Okay, so this is something. Twenty-four, twenty-five or twenty-three?
Depends on what, what is your fiscal year?
January first.
Okay, so it's November twenty-four.
Okay, so twenty twenty-four, this is something that we could potentially, Brooke and I had that conversation. I said, please, by all means, present to city council, talk to us about the need. But this will have to be revisited in, in the budgetary, uh, meetings. And so we will probably need to invite you to come back during, during our budget meetings and speak to us at that time. But this is great, don't get me wrong, uh, we, we need to know these stats. Yes, Jen.
I have a couple of questions. Do you have a bullpen of, uh, uh, providers that need to get licensed?
I estimate we have about fifteen unlicensed providers. Whether or not they are interested in pursuing licensing is a different story for a variety of reasons. Sometimes, um, it's a concern about, um, being on somebody's radar.
Gotcha.
Um, and often, uh, they don't want to be regulated. They wanna babysit and do their thing. Um, we as the council offer professional development to anybody who wants to attend, whether they're licensed or not. And it's hit or miss whether they decide they wanna come. We hope they'll at least get CPR first aid certified, uh, and do some things like that, or we can help them access additional funding right now that's pretty prolific through stimulus funding. There's a lot of funding out there, people want to become licensed. So, um, we, we just continue to try and dangle carrots in front of them to see, you know, how we can engage them.
Um, that's good to hear, but there are potentially fifteen more. My second question was, um, and I'm not gonna have all the details right, but we, we, uh, had read in the article that the school district had had teaching positions in a preschool program. So that, that was the question of if they don't need staffing rooms open, where are those children? I think is what I'm trying to say.
So that was the initial discussion. My current understanding, Mary won't be able to help answer this, cause she's with the center. Is that they have backed off that and they have now reinstated, um, the teachers they got.
Are you back up to four rooms? Six rooms?
Correct.
Can you just come up for the lecture? It's a little easier for the folks in the center to hear. Hi, I'm Mary Jelsoft, I'm the Business Manager for the Center for Early Childhood Program and for Lake County Schools. Um, so, in the school district, they start making staffing decisions in like February for the next year, and it's based on enrollment. Right, you, do you need three, second grade teachers, do you need four second grade teachers? What are the numbers in each one? And so the center looked at all of the applications that they have received for preschool for next program year, starting next week now. Um, and there were only like forty-five applications for preschool. And so at that time, they thought, last year we had seven classrooms open. Uh, that would be great ratio. Can I tell you what we could do with those three or four? Four ratio of, but we can't do that.
Sure.
Um, and so at that point, they made a decision that they would try to have four classrooms because there were only three classrooms worth of application received. Since then, we are up to, I don't know the exact, it's around a hundred applications for preschool, which is similar to this year's enrollment with ninety-six. Um, we, uh, the plan is for sixteen as in each classroom, which is an eight-to-one ratio, which is what we maintained for a long time, and that's six classrooms, but there's always a few more applications that come in right now. You know, as people are moving to town or if they decide yes, they need preschool. Um, so we're back up to six classrooms, which is what we were before this one year, just since I'm talking about, we'll be through the whole story. Um, last year we had a grant called Circle Grant, which is all about, um, community innovation for resilience and care and learning equity. And so as part of what we wrote for in that grant, we opened a seventh classroom with the intent for it being just slightly younger than preschool age. Um, our, so that's preschool is three years and four years, and then when they're five years, will they go to kindergarten? So they get two years of preschool as three and four-year-olds. Our license was for two-and-a-half-year-olds, thirty months rather than thirty-six months. And so we wanted to have this seventh classroom as an experiment to have the younger kids in. That would both be transitioned from our early head start and visiting program, and our head start preschool program would be transitioned for kids who, um, are diagnosed with special needs that are moving from home I S Ps to I E Ps, from home-based care for their disabilities into school-based care for their disabilities. Cause if you turn three in April and you're with a bunch of kids who might be almost six, it's a little tough. So the cutting the younger classroom would be good. Um, and also, since there is a mighty large waiting list in the only other licensed childcare center in town, we thought even if we can get all those kids that are those six months, that might be five or six kids, and that would probably be some of their waitlist. Um, but, and the younger classroom worked out really well, that's awesome. We have a bunch of, I mean, they're, they all look so tiny when they come in. We're even tinier, so we really liked it. And it was, it was great for transition on for kids of special needs and, um, kids coming from early head start and head start. But it wasn't just enough additional enrollment to justify that seventh classroom. So now one of our six classrooms is gonna be a younger classroom, um, but we're gonna maintain the six.
I remember when we did that a million years ago. Um, and then my third question was, and I don't know, uh, if, uh, if early childhood falls under this, but C M C was the recipient or a partner in a grant, uh, from Career Wise through Opportunity Now. And that helped with an apprenticeship program to put light, to help put, to get people licensed in the classroom. So what if you had asked me to see about, something to think about, I could explain it a little bit better than that if you would like.
I think I know what, are you speaking specifically to? Maybe I should ask a little bit more.
Sure, so Career Wise, uh, is an apprenticeship program in Colorado, Colorado, real life. They partnered to write a grant to the Office of Economic Development International Trade, uh, partnering with C M C out of Edwards. Uh, and that program is to start an apprenticeship program specific for teachers. Makes sense now?
It's.
But I don't know whether it went down to early childhood or if it started at kindergarten.
Not that I know of, but it did not go into early childhood. From what I understand, they have that apprenticeship program to get them they're in classroom practice hours before they graduate. I just met with Brett Carson from C M C the other day, and that is specific to elementary education.
I wasn't sure, just thought it was worth mentioning.
But one of our partners in the childcare coalition is Dr. Jackman, who heads the early childhood department at C M C. So we've also partnered variously with her to look at education, um, from a grant standpoint. How do we help fund, uh, educational credits and some of those things, or some of these books? But I agree, it hasn't come down to the early childhood.
Well, I would also tell you that the second phase of Opportunity Now is opening on August tenth. Might be worth looking at.
Yeah, can we talk to Barb about that?
Yeah. Oh, I don't think you could do it on your own.
Yeah.
I don't.
They, they might be considering pursuing it, so we'll talk to her as, as soon as possible.
I know that C M C was really interested in the mentor program that we piloted last year that I was speaking to earlier. Um, we had five student interns and five mentors, and two of those students are now working full-time in our, um, programs. And so I know that other C M C locations were interested in hearing about it, and I still heard Advisory Council a few months ago about the details. And so she was interested in finding some way they perform to integrate a similar system to encourage all of their C M C locations to have something similar as like a, a funnel like we do to support teachers in their first couple of years of teaching, which is the most difficult.
Thank you for answering my question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions?
I've got one too, uh, very compelling presentation, thank you. I understand that you're requesting the money primarily for staff recruitment and retention, but you also mentioned operating costs. So one of my questions is, is there enough space? It's in you can find and retain and license the teachers for enough place for daycare.
There's, there's not enough space. That is one of, one of the issues. Um, and just compared, can we vary the order in twenty-one, children under, uh, five to a hundred and fifteen spots. There isn't enough space and we're always looking for space, which is why I felt the idea of buying also the building. For the, for that was like, oh my gosh, how do you pass through them? Um, as, as a space to offer to families. So, and, and we're always looking for them, but physical space is a challenge across our state, but certainly, um, in rate coming in, right, what can we do?
And in my conversations, that's true because of the requirements they put in place for that physical space. Sometimes there, you can't, and another reason why people won't apply to the rent, or maybe they get certified, but their home would never meet the state requirement. So just, I, I don't wanna be negative about it. I think I'm, I'm honored at what you guys have accomplished, but, uh, we need space, we need teachers. And we need lawyers' guns and money.
And, and true, and it's just the families, I think, is another key that we've been looking at a lot is because, because the programs that we have now, they don't have the capacity to financially give scholarships. This would be hopefully an opportunity and have some type of tiered system for families, for them to be able to look into that in the future.
I will tell you this, we'll, we'll hear more from you, uh, probably October when we're in budget session. Uh, but when you come back, I would hear more about partnerships, um, you know, the spectrum of, of, of how you expect to bring childcare to look at and stuff. Any last questions or thoughts?
I was just gonna mention, I keep a running list of twenty twenty-four budget items that we need to keep.
How many pages is that now?
Um, I keep it in a really small font, so, uh, but I did put that on the list of things that we would need to follow up with on our twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Yeah. We will be tracking you.
Great, thanks, thanks for giving us your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Instead of, at this time, I would ask for P D Swims to please come and make their presentation.
Alright, thank you for what you're doing, kids early childhood. Did everybody here know that the leading cause of death for kids aged one to four is drowning? So we need our pool and, um, Lakehead and I, since May, we've been talking to lawyers and we've been looking to see how we can get on the ballot to get a sustainable, to have the voters decide if they want an increase in sales tax, a quarter of a cent. So say if you were to buy a hundred dollars worth of hot dogs downtown, it would be twenty-five pennies on that hundred dollars that would go into a fund to support our swimming pool operations, renovation, operation, maintenance, and eventual replacement. So we talked to, what, seven, eight, nine lawyers? And, uh, we finally got to the point where they said, well, you cannot do a petition to get on this November twenty twenty-three ballot. Um, you have to ask either the Lake County Commissioners or the City Council to refer a measure to the ballot. So we did ask the three commissioners and they did not wanna do that, um, and their reasons were they felt rushed. And they, um, also they want a, if they're gonna put an initiative on the ballot or refer a ballot initiative, they wanted it to cover more than just the pool. And if we've learned anything, the school district operated that swimming pool from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen ninety-nine. Then it was shut down because the school district did not have the money to operate it or to fix it or operate it. Um, times were really tough then. And so the citizens came together and brought the city, the county, school district together and renovated it, reopened it in two thousand and four. Um, but as you all know, it was shut down for repairs in December of twenty twenty, then the county commissioners permanently closed it in April of twenty twenty-one. So P D Swims, we're working on raising three million dollars, and that's just to replace the pool itself, renovate the aquatic center, uh, it needs a new dehumidifier, and it needs upgraded HVAC and upgraded A D A. So the last number, the latest numbers the school district came up with was, um, for a full renovation of the pool, the apartment. Was um for a full renovation of the pool, the parking lot, the aquatic center. It's ten million over ten years. So. There's a good chance the school district's gonna put a bond issue on the November ballot to renovate the pool. But we still need a dedicated source to operate it. So P D Swims, we're gonna continue to, we're gonna, we found some lawyers that. One lawyer that specializes in this. So we're gonna start talking to. Kim and Les, you all know of any way you can refer this measure to the ballot, the November ballot? And give the voters a chance to say yea or nay. Do we want to increase sales tax and have our visitors help with our infrastructure and help operate our pool? So um that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you, Mayor Lobbie, for putting us on the agenda. And if you have any questions about um what we're doing, please ask. We do have a website and um. Somebody today said, is that all you talk about is the pool, Jane? So you can talk. About the um swimming center, how much would it cost to operate? Cause that is a big question. Yeah.
Any questions for Jay?
Yes, one question. Um so. If I'm understanding this right, you're looking to put that on for this year's ballot and that's your goal, right? But would it bar you from trying to put on to next year's ballot through petition? If a city council can't find any way to put on ballot and county commissioner still refused to?
Um not that I know of, but I'll tell you what, this whole process is so murky. And there's so much red tape. It I don't know. I I I kind of doubt it, but I don't know.
So it's not a time constraint. It's more so just a. Um this allowance from public to make such a ballot measure, right? Am I understanding that right?
So it would give the voters a chance to say yea or nay if the. And I don't even know if it's possible at this point for the city council to refer a ballot measure to increase sales tax. As uh Mayor Lobbie told me today, there's no city sales tax. It's um a two thousand and nine intergovernmental agreement or I G A memorandum of understanding, M O U. So it could be completely impossible, but there's so much fine print in the Colorado statutes. And in election law um that. I've had, it's just really frustrating because we don't know. We do know at the last election, a measure was passed. So it is harder for citizens to bring, or it's just more detailed for citizens to bring an initiative. Um or do a petition and put an initiative on the ballot. It's just more more detailed and more hoops to jump through.
I think that's true at the state level. I'm not sure if that's true at the local level. I mean, I I. That's a question you probably need to ask. At the state level, yes, they made it much more difficult. Because now you had to go to each of the sixty four counties and get a certain percentage of that county to sign a petition. In order to have something referred, and all sixty four counties had to, you know, you had to get all sixty four counties to agree in order to go. To a state ballot initiative. So it it didn't make it very difficult, although I think it was the right thing to do, but that's all to start. Nonetheless, um yeah, for us, we don't have a city sales tax. So we have no ability to to refer to the ballot under those circumstances, you know.
Can you explain why? Is there a rule that says you can't have it because you don't have it?
Well, I uh the answer is, we could uh. Set ourselves aside from county in terms of tax collection. But then we have to have a whole tax collection division within the city. We have to have the ability to do that. It would be, we're talking about something far more complicated than a simple ballot.
You can have an I G A with the state. Even municipalities can have an I G A with the state where the state would still collect. And then disperse the proper sales tax of a proper boundary.
And we wouldn't need any city administration to do that. Very interesting. I didn't know that. Thank you.
I'm wondering if, and I don't know, maybe this is just calling the same thing by a different name. But like I know in one of the towns that I work in. They have like a special tax fund for specifically for some projects of improvement within the town. So it is a sales tax. It's added on to like your restaurant bill, but it is distinct from the tax that you pay. It's like the, I'm not gonna name the town, you know, like um improvement fund. So so it's a separate, it's a separate taxation that does get added on to certain bills. Like I don't think it gets added on to your groceries, but it definitely gets added on to your restaurant bills.
And hotel bills.
Right. And and that goes into a separate fund that then the city uses for. Their specific improvement projects, which I think is like a downtown plaza.
So my my question would be, what kind of burden would that put on on business people in terms of now? They have to divide up this this another tax and pay it separately. Or is there an algorithm that would simply do that?
Currently, they pay two point nine percent to the state, four percent of the county. But they pay it all to the state and then the state turns around and sends it. So as long as you have that I G A in place.
With the state.
With the state, they can keep track of that. Because the people who are reporting, either reporting either monthly, quarterly or annually. Depending on how busy they are, um they would just break that down and they report it.
Very interesting. I didn't know that. Okay, good. Thank you.
So what I understand, some county also has a similar tax for their transit system, no? So I mean, there's obviously resource there that we could use to see process states. I know that's county wide. I don't think that those slow to learn or Dylan. Um but. I mean, uh as far as getting it through, I think it's worth looking at it, even if it's not for this specific use. It's worth looking into what does that look like in general for us to go through that process for any numerous amounts of use. But especially for recreational use.
So here's what I would think, because I think obviously the devil's in the details, right? Um you know, because then we've learned a few things from the accommodations tax, for instance. Which I had a tremendous amount of development going into the ballot language. And you know, making sure that it met the state criteria for like whatever ballot language is. If there's a tax, I think we have to have, because of taper, you have to have some sort of like maximum you don't think it will reach. Otherwise you have to refund, like there's there's all of these little.
They have some of that in in their ballot initiative, yeah, current wording in their ballot initiative.
So I'm wondering, like, part of me thinks like, heck, yeah, I think there are mechanisms by which we could look into this. I'm not sure that lift is possible within the next two months. You know, before you would have to or when. No, one month. Thank you. I'm not sure that lift is possible within the in the next one month. But I also don't want to, I mean, you know, like I'm with you. I have a master in public health. I've been concerned about this ever since the get go. And a few of the commissioners are pretty sick of me hearing, talking about, we're missing an entire generation and we're placing them at risk. Um a- and I appreciate the county's long term vision approach for a recreation center. Um but one thing I have appreciated about the city is that A, we tend to be more nimble. And B, you know, damn it, we get things done. Um just gonna leave that there. And so I I would, I guess, I I I would, I don't want this to fall through the cracks. Because we've already discussed a couple potential funding mechanisms. I would like to see them more fully fleshed out. And while I I think it's unlikely that we will have something ready in a month. I I think it's entirely reasonable to look forward to the next.
Let's say for a second, Margaret, we could have something ready next month. When what is the deadline for?
I'll have to get back to you.
Okay, let's just say for a second, Margaret, we could. The way that it's written right now, it says, shall we increase from four percent to four and a quarter percent? In which case, in this case, I think we simply are adding on a quarter percent. You know, that that's it. We 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 don't need to to discuss the four percent. That's already, that already exists and is in is in play in our I G A. So it would only be the quarter percent we'd be talking about. I mean, that's that's my opinion.
I I don't know enough to say this, but I I feel like it needs to be a separate piece. Not just an added four point two five and then we're keeping traffic a point back. But I really depend on you to explain that to me because that's not my.
I think that's what I'm saying is there has to be a complete separate point two five, not even mention the four percent. It's what it would boil down to. Any thoughts? Tim, from a business standpoint, would that affect you?
No, I mean, we just remade to the state, so it's just.
You go from six point nine, seven point one five, okay?
I think Park County created a special taxing district to create their rec center a number of years ago. So that might be an example.
But this would not be a taxing district because taxing districts.
Yeah, maybe I used the wrong word, but it's a special special tax just for recreational purpose, just to create the recreational center over in Park County.
You actually have to define that in ballot language. It's that it is our taper requirements. What are you gonna use it for? How long is it gonna be there? Um yeah, so you can't just say, oh, we're gonna have a sale tax. You have to say what exactly you're gonna use.
Okay, I just want it to be just for clarity. Because the city limits get a little squirrely down on that end of town. The pool's in the city limits, right? Okay, cool. That's all, just one.
But so then the question to me is, this is a great conversation. I've learned a lot. And as part of that. Would that money be instrumental in pushing the pool forward to completion? That, and I mean, that that the answer to that doesn't seem obvious to me because that's in the school district's hands.
Well. Thursday of this week, they're gonna, the one of the agenda items is pool maintenance. Their special meeting, that's all they're gonna talk about, the county and the school district, Thursday, four fifteen, pits.
So the way being that. If we can convince them by a nod, we're not asking for a vote. We need a nod that says, yeah, this is possible. Um because it's not possible through the county, none of them. If it's possible, then they would have a greater likelihood of getting the bond issue passed. Because the survey that Magellan did. With the school district indicated that more people are willing to vote for the bond issue to restore the middle school. Intermediate school to its as aspired condition if they include the pool in it. And so the the urgency is being able to say to the school district. It seems like the, you know, this is a possibility. And well, they're not gonna be building the pool next week. And so if we don't get this taxing on ballot until next year. At least we know that there is going to be a source to maintain it and manage it in the future. Also, so if things right. From the studies that Magellan held, we believe that people are more likely to vote for this school bond issue if there's also. Uh way to operate it. We got, we applied with better for some money to renovate the pool. We sent a letter of interest and they said, um our review team does think that the aquatic center could potentially be a fit for our grant making. And we understand that with the center closed, that the community is missing out on an important gathering and recreational space. However, our hesitation and concerns are around the longer term sustainable operations of the facility, facility. I was wondering if there's a plan for the facility in the long term. Given that lack of adequate funding and maintenance led to its closure in the first place. It might not be the right fit for us if that bigger question is unanswered. Is there a plan for a ballot measure or other financial support? Our hesitation is that we would help with renovations only for the facility to close again in a couple of years. So we believe P D Swims can leverage our fundraising. If there is a levy tax for future renovation, operation, maintenance and replacement eventually.
I think it falls in the same sort of category when we're talking about, you know, a funding stream for C four, you know, or for early childcare. That a consistent funding source is gonna go a long way versus like a limited bump sum. Or like, here's ten years of, you know, however much money to like get it restored. There's still the management, there's still the ongoing stuff.
I gotta say this, um and I will, I want to see if if we have any kind of consensus for the county. If if in two weeks, and we have to be quick, it's gonna happen very, happen very quickly. You can bring us a ballot measure and you can work with the with the clerk's office in in your spare time. Uh to make sure that your ballot language meets taper requirements and that you you define in that ballot language. How the money's going to be used. Uh that's gonna be important to taper. And of course, the amount, you already have an amount in there that you think is well in excess of what you think will be collected. We're familiar with that. I just want to hear from city council, if in two weeks we have something in front of us that we can vet quickly. Would we be willing to support that as a ballot measure?
Uh yes, absolutely. I would love to have a total recreation center at some point. But I am also acknowledging to the immediate need for literally all of our communities. So yes.
Yes, I don't see the downside to it, you know? I mean, the the people will speak. I think there needs to be a lot of planning on like the. Those devilish details, like now we have funding coming in, like who is in charge of managing it? And how do we parse this out? Like that's that's.
I would agree with you. At least the big picture has to be in that ballot about how the how the money's gonna be managed.
I don't mind having the people vote on something.
That's what I would hear. And I said, really, really ultimately, it's not our decision. It's only our decision to get it on the ballot and then the the public gets to decide.
We just need to plan it.
Well, I think so too. I I'll digress a little bit and say, uh my partner Judy ran the pool for about five years. And and I don't think I ever really quite grasped the importance of the pool until it closed. And then everywhere she goes, families glom around her. She knows all the kids' names and she knows all the parents and it's everywhere. In Leadville that we go, she's like this, this super, not superstar, but she's this person. That that they really appreciated because that was the pool. And so it has become quite apparent to me that the families, you know, and there are a lot of seniors who use the pool too. But the but the family, not referring to any of you guys, but the families. This was, this was an important part of their lives. So enough of that.
Thank you very much for working with us and we'll, we'll be busy. Yeah, we're gonna get busy. So thank you.
I won't be here on the fifteenth.
Well, and I won't either.
I'm running that meeting.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in Cali's heart. I was ready to have a drink.
I'm gonna be on a cruise to Alaska.
Thank you, guys. This was a a great conversation, both these conversations. I really appreciate. Um well, the important things that I committed. Okay, next up, we have a discussion regarding the pledge of allegiance at city council meetings. Um I think you guys have a pretty good idea where I started, but I would say. I have feelings about it. I'm not, I I I'm pretty much agnostic on this this subject in the sense that, you know. I can live with, I can live without, I I've said, I don't like the feelings of constantly being indoctrinated. That that bothers me a little bit, but this is a city council decision. I will support whatever the city council decides.
So I asked for this to be put on our agenda, so I figure I better say a few things upfront and then y'all can discuss. Um so I think, like I said, the last meeting. We routinely said the pledge when I joined council and then COVID came along and it was just simply unworkable when we were all remote. And just learning how to do Zoom. Um and when we finally. Year later, came back into person again, we just sort of fell into our regular business, just like we had at Zoom. And it was a several meetings later, we said. Hey, you know what? You know, we haven't been doing this, what do you guys think? And we had a brief discussion at that time and the council that was seated at that time decided to not to continue it. I think now, you know, we've heard from people in the public, we've heard from our, our, our chief of police. Um, as a private citizen, give his two cents and, um. And, you know, the, the pup, the people who make up council has changed in the interim, so I thought it was probably time to review it again. Because I have been adhering to our prior council decision, um, to not say the pledge. Yeah, so, uh, but as a, so I would just like to say, so, you know, the pledge was. Developed by a gentleman in the late eighteen hundreds as a simple chant to teach patriotism to children. And so that, I think, is where it gets its kind of campy. You know, this is, you know, for little kids. Um, feeling and, and maybe not a very, you know, it seems just pretty superficial and, and a little indoctrinating because that was its intent. Um, when it was formed, even though it's been slightly modified over time and had, it really still maintains that. You know, children's little poem to say to teach them patriotism. Um, as somebody who has homeschooled both of my children, for a very, you know, like the better part of my adult life. We've spent a lot of time on, on our civics education and, you know, gone over the constitution and gone over some of the foundational. Documents both at the beginning of our nation and along the way that has been responsible for the course that are. The aspirational nation has followed, um, and I think like though, some of those documents speak so much more deeply. To me about what our country stands for and what, uh. You know, different feelings and different opinion, educated opinions have gone into making our nation what it is. Um, I think, you know, like even the preamble of the constitution, I find more meaningful and. I'm sure I'm not the only one here who can sing it thanks to Schoolhouse Rock, right, where some of us are old enough, but. This is not meant to be a civics lesson and as a body, we are not. Here to teach civics, so I'm not suggesting that we switch it up and say, okay, this meeting we're gonna do, they can suck in an inaugural dress and. You know, this meeting, we're gonna do federalist paper eighty-seven, um, that sort of thing, so. In, in, instead, you know, this body is civics in action, like we are the manifestation of. Civics, um, so that aside, I also don't feel very wedded. To the pledge for all of those reasons, but on the other hand, the pledge is something that is common to us all, no matter how long. Uh, you have been in this nation, you pick it up because it's a simple, campy little thing that gets riled into your brain. And it is something that we all share, so we may not all share our knowledge of. Specific parts of our foundational documents, but we all share the words of the pledge and it is something that. You know, that is a statement of unification in a way. Um, so I understand where it may have a role in a public present, you know, a public body. Um, to kind of give the statement of our unification before we all sit down and demonstrate civics in action to. The public, um, so I don't know, I, I fall in line with the mayor that I am willing to follow the will of this body. But those are my two cents on the pros and, um. Shadowness of the pledge.
Thank you, that was like a nickel's worth. That was more than two cents, you know?
I think that we should say it.
Okay, thank you. Wow, um, this issue is a bit complicated for me, um, as someone who grew up speaking primarily Spanish. Um, growing up in our schools, being taught that from even your early young age and it used to kind of. Uh, inform that type of feeling as you have stated of somewhat unified and following along with our nation. Um, I mean, I live here for a reason, could a dual citizenship and live in Mexico would be cheaper. Um, unfortunately, but I choose to live here, uh, for a reason. I obviously want to make this place a much better place than when I left it or so said, you know. Um, and part of the reason why I'm here at such a young age, but being said, I don't have memories of that because of what it meant. At that time of my life as a child of immigrants and, uh, the. Um, aggressiveness that came after two thousand and one with that. And unfortunately, um, it has left a bit of a sour taste in my mouth through no fault of, of course, whether maybe the pledge of allegiance, but just. Through the natural, um, feeling of kind of how we were treated growing up, um, as Spanish speakers and Latinos in our school district. Um, and that being such an important part of the school district that we would literally get in trouble for it. Um, and face pretty serious consequences for at my age for not going through with it. Um, even if we didn't know how to say it, um. I have, for those reasons, pretty. Not great feelings about it, um, obviously, we are not using it in that same situation, but to be completely honest, if we are to be inviting to all our community. Don't think this is a necessary space to use it, I do see the value of it in camaraderie and bringing people together. It is one thing that we all have in common, um, as city council members, no matter what, but. I think there's more than that, um, of course, and I think we can all agree, we're all in this to make a better place. Um, and we're here not because of the money, because I don't know any of you that would want two thousand dollars a year. That's a good salary, but in it for, uh, making this a better city than. Before we end our place, so I, I think that in of itself brings a lot of camaraderie and I think we've been able to get along even through our differences. Through those reasons. And quite honestly, I think it's divisive enough for our immigrant community, for a Spanish speaking community, just given the fact that how we were treated. Associated to that patriotism, um, unfortunately, um. And it's, it, it's just something that I have a hard time saying yes to, I, I would need some strong convincing. Because of how I grew up and not to mention people who didn't have the same look that I had just being born here. And the consequences that they faced, so, thank you, Christian.
Uh, yeah, I spoke about this at the last council meeting, I think, and I, I fully support starting each meeting with the pledge of allegiance. Uh, I think we're all here to do of service, it's a volunteer position, as you pointed out, basically, volunteer position. And I think it puts us all on a common ground, it's simple, it's simplistic, but it puts us all on the same page and reminds us why we're here. Good government and trying to do the best we can for the city.
I think the preamble of the constitution better outlines the government and why we're here, what, how we're here, so maybe we should sing one. So, I'm sorry, I'm done speaking.
I personally don't like it, um, I don't like the peer pressure that's put on everybody in the room. Who feels like they have to stand up and say whether they believe it or not, um, that maybe they're not citizens. Um, I don't like the implication of a loyalty pledge that came out of the nineteen fifties. Um, and I'll remind the council that we all took an oath to uphold the Colorado constitution and US constitution. And I hold that oath very strongly, um, I don't think I need to come in here and. Repeat a childhood chant to prove my loyalty to the city or state or country. Um, that's, uh, I would propose a compromise that we have a moment of silence. And if somebody wants to say the pledge to themselves, they, they're welcome to do.
Okay, thank you.
When you put the pledge on an agenda. And it is part of a meeting. That you are part of as, as a council member. To me, that, that makes it mandatory. As opposed to when C goes in, which is an individual exercise in his own right. But when you put it on the agenda, that's making it mandatory. And to me, that's compelled speech, which directly contradicts my freedoms. So, obviously with that, if, if the council decides as a group that you wanna say it, I'll say it. But my feelings about it, it's that when you make it mandatory, you're taking away my freedoms.
This has been one of the best conversations, you know, we had great conversations in city council and we're able to just gear each other. And I love that, this conversation really resonates with me, I, I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this. Um, I still defer to the idea and your point is, is so well taken, it never occurred to me that. If you put it on the agenda, now it's, now it's mandatory, um, I like the idea of a compromise. Uh, and that, that we can have a moment of silence and anybody who wants to, to, to recite the pledge is welcome to do that. And I, I would welcome to do that, um. So I haven't really changed my mind about, but I'm okay not saying the pledge of allegiance at every city, city council meeting. That's just the way I feel about it. Do we need to take a straw poll? And are we willing to, to adhere, uh, to a prop- proponents of city council opinion? Well, yeah, but I mean, not officially. Without taking a vote, who, who would feel at this point that they would like to have the pledge on the agenda and that we should say it every meeting?
So one of the things I wanted to add to that was, um, it, it might not be on an agenda, it might not be, uh, written anywhere. But schools still do the pledge and they still do it first thing in the morning with announcements. Um, but it is every student and every staff member's right to remain respectful and not participate. So I just want to point that out, that even though it might appear on the agenda, you might feel compelled, but that is still your right as long as you're respecting. So, would be my additional comment.
I, I appreciate that, I have our time when, like, you two stand up. I mean, I, I'm a little embarrassed by it, to be real honest, you know, that's just the way I feel about it.
But I think I'm, you know, like I said, I've been adhering to our prior decision. And I would feel less embarrassed having had this conversation and we all kind of, or, everybody falls, like, if we had a. A section for, you know, like, optional pledge. Then the people who felt meaning out of this can stand and do that, I'll sing my little preamble of the constitution to myself. You know, Tracy can have a moment of silence and, but we all understand where we're coming from, right, you know, like, we're not being disre- disrespectful. People have their opportunity and, and I think that's, I think that's fair.
Given the option, that, that feels a little better, um. So what if we were to propose that all the agenda would be a moment of silence slash optional pledge of allegiance? I don't know what, I'm grasping at straws here, I, I, I want, I wanna take care of us and, and, uh. Within, within the context of, of how we feel about this.
Not that anyone here needs my blessing, but me choosing to say the pledge should not. Have any bearing on your feelings of doing or not doing it, that is your choice and I support that.
I do understand that, um, I, I, I would say this, if we, if we had, if we had that in, in there, in, in the agenda that said. Optional, um, um, moment of silence. Um. Or pledge of allegiance and just left it at that.
I, I feel like we could just leave it at moment of silence and anyone who wants to stand up and put their hand over their heart and look at the flag may do so, like. You don't have to stop them from doing that.
Well, anybody in city council, if they want to say the pledge of allegiance, that could be their moment of silence, I.
I wouldn't. Exactly, I, I don't think we need to necessarily specify that it's an optional pledge of allegiance, I mean. More than sure that some of us will go into that as choosing and it kind of gives the liberty to choose what that time means to you. As a council person, um.
I, I'd like to hear some opinions on that, whether or not just an op, if, if a, a moment of silence is adequate to what we're trying to accomplish.
I think it's counter to those, that's who you'll compel to say the pledge of allegiance. Because a part of doing that is doing the unity, doing the unison with someone else, so your silence. Would impede my feelings about saying that, I don't know, there's a right answer, I'm just telling you that I, when I say the pledge of allegiance, I'm not saying it to myself. I'm saying it to be in unison with the group. Otherwise, I just walk around doing it all the time. So, that, that's my, I, I don't want to impede your moment of silence, just like I don't need to impede my, my. Right to say it audibly.
Do we just change it to optional pledge? And those who choose to remain seated can stay in respectful silence, because, you know, I don't want it to turn into is. Moment of silence and then, you know, we're up here like danger on our phone, you know, something like, you know, we need to use it.
What do we think about just worded it as, uh, uh, optional pledge of allegiance or moment of silence?
Or you could do optional pledge of allegiance and, and, uh, because we need to actually know what language to put on the. Gen optional pledge of allegiance, those choosing not to. Enjoy a moment or, or choose not to, or debate or allow.
I, I don't think you have to go to that, that, and, and it has to be that worded, they just, uh, optional pledge of allegiance or moment of silence.
There, the or makes the difference. Better than a slash.
Okay, so the agenda will say optional pledge of allegiance or moment.
I will say, I totally respect this, I don't love it. You know, because I'd like for us to be in unison, but if that's not possible currently, then I think this is a good.
But we, if we are in unison in using a moment of respect for whatever this body and this. The actions that this body takes means to us in individually, then, then that is a form.
I mean, yeah, like I said, I grew up with it and it has the meaning that it has to me and it has the meaning that it has to immigrants. And it has a meaning that it has to you guys, and I'm not gonna be disrespectful about it.
Does that wording sound acceptable?
Does anyone feel embarrassed by how they intend to move forward with this?
A little. Put my big boy pants on, got it, all right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, I appreciate Lori putting this on the agenda and I appreciate the conversation.
All right, council reports, you've got forty seconds.
The city came out and did a wonderful job finishing our beautiful new paper on East Seventh Street. And the storm today just took it all out.
Did it take out the, took out the asphalt?
No, but all the edges that they cleaned up and the, their mud came down from the other side and snuck covered in the street.
Because it was all fresh, yeah, I guarantee you, I, I was driving around town just looking to see what was going on. Versus I wanted to see was the drainage at the rally I'm working, both of their ponds had water. So there, there's, there's storm sewer system working, but that county manhole, anybody see pictures of that? It was a geyser. Across, across Highway twenty-four, um. Oh, wouldn't race like that, we have no drainage systems in Rattler, we know that, but, uh, I'm sorry that happened, I'm not surprised, but. Street departments get on that, try to clean that mess up. Any other, any other council reports?
I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate to bring up at this time, but, um, Dan Green and I got a comment.
I don't I don't know what's appropriate to bring up at this time, but um, Dan Green and I got a comment from the citizens today that's concerned about ADA parking in public lots. Said he's been to the council three times. And hasn't seen any movement on.
I believe that that uh, this that the street department has been, it's been discussed with the street department. They they have to get to it. I mean, you know, it's just, it's.
Well, I guess the question is that they the. The spots haven't been painted or they need more spots. Because we are in the process of getting the blue paint to redo, so you can see the yellow curves were done recently or grail short on yellow paint.
Can we get some blue curves around town?
We're getting the blue to redo the spot. So is it that the spots needs, the existing spots need to be repainted or there are not sufficient ADA spots?
My impression reading these emails, people lose their are not sufficient ADA spots. He specifically calls that or is he called out?
Especially I I think the Tabor Opera House, sure they have certain requirements for a number and they're known.
There there used to be, it's gone away. I mean, it's just dissipated, but they had spots before. Okay. They were the closest ones to the table opera house there near the near the pole.
Even aside from the blue paint, though. Are we doing signs that are perhaps a little bit more recognizable?
We do have some some of those signs and the street department has them. So yes, the answer is yes. And we used to have a, used to have that that template that you could put in the parking. Space. And I think we had some some of those torch towns and I don't know if we still have them or not, but that's something we can follow along. We appreciate that.
Okay, so to respond to this person.
They've already been working on it. We've been doing painting around town. You'll notice if you look, there's some blue curves. That they've put around town.
I have seen them.
Yeah, so they've started, but it's a matter of manpower.
And I do not recall anybody coming since I have been here.
I don't either, but.
It's been here three times.
Been here?
Yes. I I do not recall anyone in the last year and a half.
Well, the last time we had an ADA person come into city council was was Katie.
Right.
And that was been five years ago.
Over eight oh nine, there was a little bit of of discussion over ADA stuff up there.
But we.
Perhaps if we were just saying that maybe they are confusing the city and the county.
Yeah.
That that often happens, but we don't recall anybody coming to us, but we will definitely work on. Addressing what ADA spaces we have.
Okay, you mentioned the lots at Third and Harrison, Western Hardware and then also the Tabor.
Okay.
Uh, maybe we could direct streets to just kind of like specifically. Pull out those three and review.
Okay. Sure, you have something?
Um, I it's really not related to us, but I read with interest the article in Summit County, uh, for Summit County. For the uh, getting rid of the single-use plastics and uh. Just giving them a silent cheer.
You know, it's funny because that's that's been my my mantra all along is is we had some kids, what, three years ago or so come and talk to us about. The plastic bag and doing something about plastic bags. And I said, have you been to say what? Plastic bags are the least you will ever do. Every half of everything is plastic. You know. Somebody takes that.
Well, Summit County is working on fixing it and I'm delighted by it. At some point when we have all the free time in the world. I think the city council could address that as well.
We could, but it it this is a worldwide worldwide issue of making things that that are compostable.
But. No, we should stop selling single-use water.
Oh, well, that, yeah.
I I would love to be able to. Is there a legal way? Because I know Summit County is big enough, but like. We big enough to like say, hey, safely. I mean, I guess it was out of the picture for us, but.
Safely in the county. I do know about that too for the city. It's not us. It needs to be a county.
Yeah.
I'm just putting it out there that I was cheering them on.
Thank you. Any other council reports?
Uh, yes, I have one throughout, but I am working with Emily as a contractor to help out uh, CNU with their forty thousand dollar. Um, per unit refurbishing the mobile homes that they're doing there. So if you guys know of anyone, please direct them to me. I'm going to be door knocking tomorrow, doing a bunch of work, so.
All for the mobile home parks.
Uh, no, unfortunately, it's only within city limits and we're starting specifically with the CNU mobile home parks.
Gotcha.
My God, it would have been so nice if they spoke to us about this before they went through, because if it was all for mobile home parks, we would have such an easy time feeling that money after them.
Well, you can see in your things like this.
You don't have to be in a mobile home park. You can be in any, we're starting with. You don't have to be in a mobile home park, but you do have to be in a mobile home. So if there's someone who's living on their individual and we pull up some names of people who have. If there's people who are living on a lot, but they have a mobile home, they qualify. I think so. It just depends on if they're in city limits. Manufactured home. City limits. That's what we're looking at. All right. It's exciting anyway. We love that. It'll be hard, but definitely worth it.
Well, for me, I want to let everybody know, uh, next Tuesday I leave for uh, to visit our twin city of Alpes. In County Cork Island and they came here about a year and a half ago and we had, they were delightful and. You know, they've taken this very seriously into heart and I I wanted to return that favor while I was still there. So I'm going, I'm going there. Um, and just to be clear, it's all on my dime, you know, you know, it's all. All my expense and I bought them gifts and I I paid for those also, although Fritz, you know, was very, very kind in in selling me. Uh, some Melis for half price. Uh, and saying, um, I I'm particularly able to do this. And uh, you know, having what what is normally called a sister city, but in Ireland it's twenty. And so, um, and then they're gonna, three of them are coming back here in September for the dedication of the memorial. So, um, anyway, that's all. I'll be gone for ten days.
It's just Jerry should get an appointment.
No, I I literally wrote Fritz a letter. I said, here's what I'm doing. Here's why I'm doing it. Uh, I'm hoping I don't need an appointment for January of twenty twenty six. Uh, and he said, uh, he he said, we'll take care of it. So it was very, very nice. All right, that's it for me. Um, did we even talk about the meetings planner? The only thing I would say is the the lure meeting is Thursday, should be very brief. I appreciate if everybody could jump on there. And music in the Park at Zeitz is that same evening. So we can all, we can all take the lure meeting from Zeitz Park. It wouldn't wouldn't be noisy or anything. And then Boom Days this weekend. And then, uh, real quick, uh. Next Tuesday, before I head for D I M, it's like Julie McPlus is going to be here. And I've set up a meeting with her and I want to talk to her about several things that I I just feel like the state's missed the mark, especially with houses. And so, um, but if there's anything that you guys would like for me to bring up with her, just shoot me an email. And be glad to bring up any subject that that we feel uh, is germane uh, and something that maybe she can have an effect on.
She also plans to be at Boom Days pretty.
Oh, really? Oh, good, good. Well, I figures. Anyway. Very cool. Oh, okay. At this time we have, let's see, let me make sure. Catching everything on the agenda. Yes, the last thing is public comments, please. Oh, we do.
Hi, I am Sabi Garza. I have been in the community since nineteen ninety six. I am a licensed home childcare provider.
Be licensed home.
Back in when I first started in nineteen ninety seven, there was about maybe about four or five of us licensed. And we also had Pitt Elementary and we have morning start at times. And we're still having a waitlist. In the past three years, I've had about one hundred people reach out to me over the last three years that I serve only about twenty families. Twenty children per year that I serve. And yes, we have to go through very many loopholes to go through like rules and regulations and keep our home up to par and. In the important inspections and stuff like that. Yeah. Um, but also I want to say here, I kind of got lost in thought here. Um, because I have that dinner. But I want to show you this because I thought this, this is me. This is me before the pandemic, you know, trying to figure out how am I going to make it affordable for families? How am I going to create all this quality? How am I going to run this operation? How am I going to do everything? Only one person. And then. Have you heard about the road team with Eric Winhameyer? Have you heard of him? He's a blind person who went up Mount Everest. Have you heard of him? He went up, but he had a road team. To be able to accomplish that. And Adam, two years ago, when we were getting sponsored, funding into the American Rescue Plan. I'm going to see like Lake County Building Generation. I also received Circle Plan. I just give so many honey and it proved to be a very good support for us in order to operate and sustain our operation to the quality. And in addition, I also learned how to do this by myself. I needed an assistant. Because I've dragged myself, I think, last couple of years, all by my own. Working fifty hours a week without weight, without lunch. I said, I don't even know this thing. And if I'm going to apply to be grant, I even need more support so I can actually. Step aside, spend a day writing grants, keeping up the reports and all this, but I was working about sixty to eighty hours a week lately. Just to keep up with all the grant reports thereafter. Okay, so yeah. When you support us, you support the family and I appreciate it. And the family loves you. She came today and I also have another family here and my whole daycare is called Sophie's Home. Sophie's Home Childcare. And like I said, I've been doing it for over twenty five years, serving over ten thirty five children. Um, so, yeah, I look forward that we're looking for hopefully that we will expand in the sense that we will be able to train other people. By using expertise that I've learned in the last two years, especially with the business operation, really learning the operations that.
I know you've been working very closely with Child Care Coalition and I appreciate all you do.
But yeah, I just wanted to share this with you that now you know. And if you would like to go visit my home, you're more than welcome to pay a visit with me. Okay, and my number is seven one nine four eight six thirty two three, if you want to adapt to me. And come and visit. Yes, I still have a landmine number. Okay, so yes, you may come to see, so you know for yourself what is all about the license. Okay, and what it takes in order to license other people in order to make.
Thank you. Please.
I'm Abby Raj, first timer, but if they're all listening at fault, I'll come back. Good community info. I'm really lucky that I get to help my daughter with Sophie. She's just such a gift to the community. Um, I wanted to come here today just to show my support of the amazing people that have been setting up a foundation and the money. It's incredible. It's very well needed. Um, I'm actually going to get a little bit teary because uh, my daughter is going to be two in September. And when we found out I was pregnant, I was first so excited and then absolutely terrified. Um, for a lot of reasons, but also because in the community, I just heard there was no childcare for people that were under one. My husband and I both work. Um, we love Leadville. We love being here. We wanted to keep being here, but we didn't. We weren't going to do. And we lucked out. We we kind of poached the man from next door. Um, and she would love it, but she got another position and was moving on and we did not know what we were going to do. And we had found out that we had just gotten into a different daycare program up here. But in addition to being a requirement that you are one-year-old and in walk, there are other things that the parents will get in the room. Like one nap a day, no bottles. And there's no, there's like a cot on the floor and she is one-year-old. So she, my girlfriend tosses and turns, like she was going to go right out that box. So we're terrified. So we did the only thing that we could think of, which was relocating my seventy-five-year-old parents. From Massachusetts to Leadville for four months. And we had to find them housing, which is another topic that I'm sure you guys are familiar with. Um, not super easy. So we were able to find them housing and paid probably twice what we wouldn't have paid for childcare. Just to have him come and help because my daughter was not at the point that she could meet those requirements. Um. So that was really tough. And then it was a gift that we were able to thank Sophie. I just want to advocate as much as I can as a parent and community for what she does for our children. She's absolutely amazing. She makes it possible for my husband and I to work. Um, we were literally facing the decision of one of us quitting our jobs. Which would have been even more difficult, just because there were no options for us. Um, so it was just really important for me to come here tonight, make sure that I'm reporting everybody in the community. I had no idea all the other topics that were going down here. So like I said, I'll probably be showing up a lot more. Um, because I always think we're really important and critical, but I just think it's so, so important. And you know, my husband and I would love to be able to give my daughter a sibling. But we can't because we literally don't have childcare for her. Um, like I said, the person that helped us the first eight months of my daughter's life has gotten a different permanent job. There's nobody else. Um, one of my best friends who thankfully is with my daughter's mom, wanted me to also speak on her behalf because she also has a daughter of a similar age. They've never been able to find childcare. So. I would love to give my daughter a sibling. Um, and if you could not respond additional childcare, that would be great. Um, and I think that's also meaningful. So thank you for all of this.
We hit on all the important topics. For what?
I have a comment.
Oh, oh, sorry. That's a new one.
I just wanted to make a quick public service announcement that I have heard. There's a bacterial pneumonia going around Summit County and two dogs have just died. And so I just wanted to like let everybody know, careful with your pets, salmon and everything. Maybe not her. Is not a great idea at this time. Um, and then some of the symptoms are fever, difficulty breathing, decreased uh, exercise tolerance. Uh, lethargy, coughing, nasal discharge, non-breathing, rapid breathing, weight loss and dehydration. And that's it. I just wanted to let everybody know, taking a few dogs.
Thank you very much. Okay, Steve, please.
The eighth. This is in two parts, refined to treat everything. When a charismatic schoolyard bully asserts an irrigated rationalization to the peer group. Has exclusive support for maintaining abusive, weak and temporary. Regular group dynamics indicate no challenge to the validity of a charismatic assertion may be based on timidity or self-preservation. Hence, often the group members may accept the irrigated rationalization. As a willing house is to psychologically ease their conscience in a manner of confirmation bias. Uh, the only time I can think that I made a statement. That to city council that wasn't true, but I didn't quantify by exam on evidence that I might expect to be. Was uh, with the charity tranny uh, showed up uh, thing on the vehicle. And I think I was working on it by the foundation. And victimization of transsexual American community. And other communities as well. Uh, that being said, uh, I'll go to part two, which is more important to me. And a minute fifteen seconds is going by. Um, I strongly support uh. Licensing childcare in our community because a child, I was abused by childcare providers. Uh, part of the reason was financial. Uh, I mean, my mother was working and uh, was, these were people that were poor at all. Um, so I think that uh. This is a very, very important thing. The uh. Responses of this uh. Of the request for such support. They didn't really touch on this issue of it. But um, children in a unlicensed daycare center, um, who's watching the kids? Um, what opportunities are molestation of the child in case that caregiver is going to the store or something like that? So I think it's very, very important that these uh, people be licensed, that their buildings be vetted, if that's the right word for it. That um. No unauthorized people are uh, taking care of these, are being involved with these these children. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Thank you all very much. Fine city council meeting at uh, eight fifty-one. We are adjourned.